We will call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you could do the roll call, please.
English.
Here.
Evans. Ettinger.
Here.
McEvers.
Here.
Gukin.
Yeah.
Miller.
Here.
Let's rise for the invocation. We have Pace Hartfield with One Place Church with us tonight. Welcome.
Would you bow with me in prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you that in this moment, there's not a person in this city, a person in this room, a person sitting on the City Council that you are not mindful of. It's humbling just to even consider that you want to be a part of our affairs, but your word tells us that when we need wisdom, we can seek you. God, I thank you for a nation and the freedoms that we have to approach you and to pray for you, to pray to you in meetings and gatherings like this. I thank you for the City Council. I thank you for our mayor. Thank you for the various levels of city officials and for the role they play in this great city. I pray, God, your wisdom in their lives. I pray that tonight you would give us all your perspective. I pray that our actions, our attitudes, the words that come out of our mouth, that they would please you tonight, God. I pray that the actions that we take as a city tonight would be actions that would honor you. And God, again, we thank you for this time and this gathering in this great city that we call home, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
What do you leave us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever, just as for all.
I don't believe that there are any amendments to the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to public comment. I know there's a number of folks here that want to comment on the parking issue tonight. So as we keep these comments together, what I'd like to do is, is there anyone in here that would like to raise their hand that's not here, would like to give public comment on anything else? I'd like to just give them an opportunity to come forward first. If there's anyone that would like to give public comment on anything else?
Two over there, back there.
Yeah, so come on, come on up.
Mayor Winmar, members of council, thank you for hearing me on the issue of the annexation on Potlatch Hill. It'll be heard later this evening. I am Jim Miller.
Just one moment, please. There is going to be an opportunity for public comment at that. Would you like to give a comment now, or would you like to wait for the hearing?
What's more appropriate?
It's probably more appropriate to wait for the hearing. I apologize. I should have made that more clear to you. Yes.
Yeah, so for any other comments other than the public hearing and the parking.
There you go. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Gerald Frank. I live at 1425 East Lakeshore. And my comments are on another item on the agenda that is, actually has to do with parking, but not the parking that everyone else is here about. So my comments are, will address the access to our yards across the street. So would you like me to do that at the time of the rest of the parking comes up?
That's not a public hearing, is it, Mike?
No, it's not.
Yeah, so right now would be appropriate.
Okay. So what is being proposed is that each homeowner along East Lakeshore get a five- or six-foot spot to enter the, our yards across the street, get our lawnmowers in and ourselves in at the times when the, otherwise that would be covered with cars. So several years ago, a few years ago, the city painted some spots in front of the gates, and that doesn't work. So, you know, there's been, there's been parking, parking our own vehicles out there kind of to protect the gates, or putting cones, or bicycles, or things like that out. And so what's being proposed right now is that it will be actual parking violation to park there in front of the gates, nine gates, I believe, and that the Street Department will paint no parking in that, in that five-foot area. So I'm here to encourage you to vote for that. I don't think it's going to be a contentious debate, but I'm here to say that that is an important thing for us to have, to be able to get our lawnmowers and wheelbarrows and ourselves and our families into the yards across the street.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on a non-parking, non-public hearing issue?
Good evening. My name is Dick Barkley. I live at 1203 East Lakeshore Drive, and I agree with what Jerry is saying. It's not often that people block those gates because the crosswalk that's painted in there helps, but there are some people who go out of their way to park in that spot vindictively, and it's just aggravating that we can't get in there with a lawnmower, with ourselves, or a wheelbarrow, or whatever we need to do across, you know, our own property. So if anything you can do to help would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on any other issues? All right, so invite anyone up that would like to start off and talk about parking. Come on up.
Hello, thanks for letting me be here. Counselor, Mr. Mayor, I'm Keith Bo, and I'd like to see a show of hands of who would like local free two-hour parking returned to our city. Raise your hands, please.
So Keith, if you could, for the record, just give your place of residence.
Keith Bo, Post Falls, Idaho. And I know I'm not a resident of Coeur d'Alene, but I have, I rent two office spaces here in the city, and I believe my lease goes towards property taxes, but I'm not a resident of Coeur d'Alene. When free local two-hour parking was eliminated at these prime tourist locations, it felt like the parks were taken away from us and given to the tourists. It feels like they were stolen. It feels like we're not welcome in town anymore. The signs say, "Thank you for visiting Coeur d'Alene." Let me repeat that. The signs now say, "Thank you for visiting Coeur d'Alene." I believe in equal access. The parks belong to and were created for the people of Coeur d'Alene. I do not believe in a use tax for area residents who built them for their children just because it's now a prime tourist location. There should be equal access for, equal access for rich, poor, short, fat, young, old, healthy, and disabled. Those burden carrying small children, and those who can't walk great distances are on a fixed income, regardless of their ability to pay. I believe in equal access. A citizen with low resources should not have to park jammed up in the neighborhoods and walk, or even worse, not enjoy the parks at all. So only those with expendable income are able to visit our beautiful parks. I don't think local citizens should have to pay to visit public property. Public property is public property. I also don't think the city should have uneven rates depending on how premium or desirable the park is. For example, Sunset Park is free, McEwen is not. Those poor and elderly can go to Sunset Park, while McEwen is for paid clientele only. The poor, the elderly, and the single mom can go to Sunset Park. The single mom scraping to barely survive and continually trying to make ends meet with zero frivolous expendable income, why she's free to go to Sunset, but doesn't have the resources to take her kids to enjoy McEwen. It's not fair to her, and it's not fair to her kids. I have some quotes here. Quote, "I cannot afford that. I'm a single mother of four. The park is affordable outdoor fun, but not what I must choose between parking and groceries." Cheryl from Coeur d'Alene. "I'm elderly. I'm able to walk three blocks to the parking garage, and I love to visit downtown." Judy Norton, Coeur d'Alene. "Until this parking fee changes, I won't be going downtown for the sole reason I can't afford it, as I'm not a rich tourist and I'm on social security." Dennis. "There are no words. I won't be going downtown anymore. Most of us are struggling just to make rent. I feel like we're being penalized for being a North Idaho resident. It used to mean something to say that you were born and raised here, not anymore." Rachel Al. "My son is a diabetic and keeps all his supplies in the car, so when his blood sugar goes low, as it often does when he's active, it'll be hard to get to his supplies if he's parked up the street or in another neighborhood." Shelley Spencer, Coeur d'Alene. "With a one-month-old, a two-and-a-half-year-old, and a four-and-a-half-year-old, it's quite the feat to walk far and park, or to park and walk far. They're cranky and tired even before we get to the park. I won't pay, and now we will go way less often." Rebecca Schur. "So now we have to pay to see our lake. I grew up in Coeur d'Alene. I feel like our town is for tourists, not for folks who have lived here forever. Locals should not have to pay to park." Denise Sears, Coeur d'Alene resident. I have hundreds of these comments on my page. "The fact that a great park was made does not mean the city should have the right to charge to use it now. This is not Disneyland. At least give us a wristband for those of us who live here. If someone wants to park all day, I get that, but short-term visits by our citizens should not have to pay Diamond Parking headquartered in Seattle to visit our own playgrounds and parks that were created for us. The city says they don't want outsiders, or the city says they want outsiders to pay to maintain the parks, but people don't come in from Seattle, Spokane, or California and park for an hour to play with their kids and go home, but locals do. Also, I believe it's wrong to have Diamond Parking out of Seattle have for-profit financial incentive to issue parking tickets whereby they earn a commission on each ticket issued to our citizens. My suggestion to the mayor was, if the city needed the money, which I don't believe it does, but if it did, to increase the long-term rates, because folks from Spokane or Seattle wouldn't care. I wouldn't care either if I wanted to park in McEwen and kayak all day. I would be taking up space that families could otherwise use for a short-term visit. Eliminating local two-free-hour parking, I believe, is unfair and hits the poor, the feeble, and those with low resources. These are public areas that were created for our citizens to enjoy. We are here to serve the people and to serve their best interests. I have pored over the city financial plan of 2018 and 19, and I'm convinced the city is awash with cash. I've never been corrected on one point by the city administration or the council. If the council would, that an Idaho plate gets free two-hour parking again, there would be much rejoicing, I guarantee you. Idaho residents have other privileges like this. Thank you for hearing my comments."
Thank you. So I'm okay, I'm okay with that round of applause, but as you continue your meeting, it's customary not to applaud at council meetings, but I'm good with that. I'm good with that first round of applause. That's fine. So Troy, if you could come up, and I know you want to give some information. Also, on the back table, we have some parking facts. I hope that folks that are interested have a chance to grab this page and take a look at it. There's a lot of information on there. I want to thank councilperson Miller. She did a great job of putting all of this information, and it is on our website as well. So Troy, just give us a little bit of information for our folks in the audience and at home as well.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. Yes, parking is a topic of discussion, and we are not here to have any type of detriment to any of the folks that have been mentioned. This plan has been worked on by your parking commission for a number of years and is a plan designed to generate revenue to help offset the costs for both the parking lots and for our parks. In our financial plan this upcoming fiscal year, we have one full-time position that is in the plan to be paid for from revenues from the parking lot. This is the front page of the city's website. We have a parking button on it. It includes the frequently asked questions that have been worked on. And as we go forward, we really want the community to understand that we have a parking commission and a process by which to continue to make parking better and more accessible. So parking has been around a very long time, and paid parking has been around a very long time. The parking meters are gone, and our Downtown Association works with us closely on having a parking program that assists with the turnover of cars on our downtown streets, thus two hours free, and then they, it is an enforced parking program, and then a ticket may be issued. So the parking structure at McEwen is a few years old, and this year in February, we approved the rate increase that took it to a dollar per hour. The third hour is the same charge that it was before. So the first two hours were modified to $1 per hour. That really works into the technology side of the way in which to make the parking experience as positive as it can be. You can pay by phone, you can pay online, you can use an app. You don't even have to go to the pay kiosks. Our goal there was to lower the lines at the pay kiosk if a person wants to be downtown. Frequently, there's monthly passes available. You can do that online as well. So the movement that we are doing is designed to make it an easier experience. The thing that came about from your meeting in February and the implementation of the rules was the fact that the parking lot around City Hall is free parking. So that was a compromise that council allowed us to do in order to keep parking next to McEwen at no cost. So there is no enforcement on the lower level of City Hall. There's no enforcement on the whole south-side parking lot. It is wide open and free to the public. So again, we have a lot of information on our website quoting a few facts from our particular parking plan. This is the map. The most green fluorescent colored green is two-hours free parking. I'll point to City Hall, south of City Hall, along City Hall, and around down by the library lower level is all two, is free parking, period, exclamation point. So we have two-hour free parking during the day up at the library. That is enforced. Please do not park there more than two hours. You will be issued a ticket. There's no other way to do that. That's been by design, working with our library board, to make sure that our patrons can come and use the library. If you want to use the library, please do. Park there for 1 hour and 59 minutes. If you choose to need more time, you can go south of City Hall and park the rest of your experience there. The other addition was the parking garage. Yes, it is north of McEwen Field. It is two-hours free. The third hour is $1. So in order to keep a $7 million asset in check and maintained, we do need revenue to pay for that, but that is the best bargain for parking that we have. It's covered parking. We have a maximum number of monthly permit holders, and we have maxed that out. So that's been good news. Again, the McEwen Field, a dollar per hour, moving over to our museum, moving up, or at Independence Point, excuse me, moving to the museum, again, municipal parking available, and then everything along Northwest Boulevard. So a quick count is that we have over 2,268 downtown public parking spaces. 1,334 of those offer some type of free portion to it. 760 of those spaces are two-hour on-street free parking. 300 of the spaces in our new city of Coeur d'Alene, Coeur d'Alene Avenue Parking Garage are two-hours free, and the third hour is a dollar. 218 all-day free parking spots around this campus. In addition, we have 116 two-hour free parking spaces for the library patrons. Again, after 6 o'clock, that's wide open as well. And of course, our on-street parking is two-hours free from 9:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. On Saturday, it is free, as well as after 6 o'clock and all holidays. So our goal in providing this new option called the Coeur d'Alene Avenue Parking Garage was to assist with paying for all of these assets and the direction to take revenue generated to help offset the costs of maintaining the great parks and the personnel that we need for that. So again, our website is loaded with information. This is our campus that we're at right now. Again, this is all free parking. Quick little update, city staff has done its best from Memorial to Labor Day to eliminate onsite city-owned vehicles from this lot. At night, you probably won't find more than five cars owned by the city during the summertime in this parking lot. That is open to our constituents and our public. Looking at that brand-new parking garage, looking again at McEwen and the access, looking at Independence Point, as well as our museum lot, and our partnership lot up around the skate park Memorial Field, and the partnership with Cootenay County on that lot. So just facts on what it is we are attempting to do, Mr. Mayor and council. Any questions I can answer?
Questions for Troy.
Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand what you're saying. I do think that we, given the public pressure, that we could probably consider other things besides what we have. I don't think the public is happy with it, and I think I would be in favor of reviewing the parking fee situation, but I understand that I need support up here in order for that to happen. So maybe having all these people here would lend its support to some of my peers, but I would be entirely in favor of looking at reviewing free parking at McEwen or consistent parking fees across, or some other option. I know we can't, we can't allow free parking for people with Cootenay plates. I know we can't do that, but I know that there's other options available, and I would like to think that council and staff would be open to hearing them.
I would like to respond to that with the process, because you're right. This is the first year we've had a parking garage that we call Coeur d'Alene Avenue, and will it meet the projections that we had set? I would share with you that the parking commission is very impressed with the number of monthly passholders. That filled up within the first month. So there are some things that are happening. The technology piece is a big one, that we believe that with time, the ease in taking care of that parking fee will be remedied so that we don't have to continue to buy pay stations. So that is an intentional plan, and it is a big reason for moving to the first hour being a paid. It's hard to go online and pay nothing to have a parking receipt generated, because there's going to be cost with all of that. So with this process we have, being a parking commission and looking at fees, looking at budget, and what the lots are doing, I think we are open to that based on what we're doing today, what the public is saying, how McEwen is performing. So I think we have it in place to continue to look at fees, which is what you get to approve.
What would it take to restore the two-hour free parking at McEwen?
You would have to go to work and have a council action to remove the fee that was put in place.
And I just want to let, Kiki asked if this was a decision. This is not a decision item. No decision can be made on this tonight, but we are free to discuss it.
Yeah, correct. You know, and Dan, I agree with you. You know, we, I went back and did a lot of research on parking. Believe it or not, we started paid parking in the city of Coeur d'Alene in 1942. So paid parking has been around it for 77 years, and to be honest with you, I mean, it's not perfect. That was one of the questions why, when I asked our parking consultants when we came in, I said to her, I said, "Annika, I'd like to develop a perfect parking system." And she said, "That's not going to happen. You're not going to get it." But, Dan, you're right. It's an ongoing process. It's something that we should continually study. I think it goes through the process. This whole process came through the parking commission. They studied it a lot. It came then to council and where we are today. I want people to know as they come up here and make public comment that we take all public comment very seriously, and we're going to take notes, and all of your public comment that has been made is going to go back to our parking commission for further study. But you're 100% right, Dan, is that we need to continue studying parking, and we are never going to get it perfect, and we are never going to make everyone happy, but it doesn't mean that we can't keep trying to do better. And I think, and I think we can, and we're going to look at it.
Thank you.
Yeah, to answer that question, so, thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So anyone that wants to come up, feel free. Again, I would, if you don't want to, and don't be shy, we're really a nice, pretty nice group up here. Don't be shy. Come on up and speak your mind, and we'll take notes, and then we will put it through the process.
Hello. Again. My name is, excuse me, my name is Steve Peak, and I live at 1506 North 9th. And I just had a question was about parking, but a little bit different, because I'm not sure of the rule. Handicap parking, if you have a handicap placard, is it?
It's free.
Free, that's what I thought.
In any, in any lot, it's free all the time.
So if you have a handicap sticker, you can, is it only good in the handicap spots?
Yes, unfortunately.
But if all the handicap spots are taken? I'm asking as my brother's paralyzed. Just curious.
Troy's disagreeing with you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, the placard will work anywhere in any city lot and/or in any city on-street parking. We recognize it as a all-the-time accessible. You may not be able to find a spot that has all of the access, but yes, it is good anywhere. And please do display the placards so that we know.
His license plate's got the thing.
So Troy, then, he's good, they're good in any, any spot, then? Okay.
Any spot, so they don't have to necessarily... Now, his, and I'm talking because of my brother. He has to have a ramp that comes out to get his wheelchair out, and sometimes he has to take two spots because he can't get his ramp out, because sometimes he parks in a handicap, and then somebody will park next to him, and he can't get in, you know? So that was my question.
Hopefully that answered that.
Right, thank you.
And I think that's in the FAQs if you need a refresher.
I don't know what is FAQ.
On that website that Troy...
Oh, frequently asked questions. I got it, thank you.
Frequently, sorry about that.
I'm old.
My bad.
I went to college this past fall, and they said, "Oh, we've got to check the syllabus."
But for reference, it is there.
I didn't get the syllabus. I didn't know what it was. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Come on up. Anyone else that would like to talk? Come on up.
Hi, guys. My name is Skylar Stancis. I live at 904 East Garden, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I am the granddaughter of John Stancis. So I was raised in a family that, if you want to have your voice spoken, you better speak up, because no one's going to do it for you, which is why we're here tonight. I heard what you said, and I think it was, it was well-spoken, and it was great, but the thing is, it's, it's not just the fees. It's not, it's not just that. I was raised here, and there has been so much change, and I think that's part of why we're so upset. We don't feel heard. We don't feel like you guys are being just and fair, and that's not okay to us. Everything in our city is changing, and we have to adapt to it so fast because of people who haven't been here, because of people who have no idea what makes Coeur d'Alene so great. And I have to raise my children differently because of it, and I can't take them to enjoy things that I got to enjoy growing up the same way because of it. And when you guys make your decision on what you're going to do, keep that in mind. I'm a single mom. I have two kids, and I have my nephews all the time, and my friends' kids all the time. I can't walk a whole gaggle of children so far, because people who make more money than I do, people who aren't a different tax bracket than I am, get first choice. I see a lot of moms and a lot of dads out here, and you guys know that walking children more than a block is a nightmare. It's, it's not fair. So just remember that we're not here just because the fees, yeah, a dollar, $2, that's fine, but at the end of the month, that could be a gallon of milk for my kids, that could be a box of cereal. But the real issue is, we just feel like there has been an unjust decision made upon the locals who made this town what it is.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, okay, so we got to have, we got to have rules. I'm sorry, but we've got to have rules, you know, and please, no pause, right? Love the comments. Everyone's welcome, but that's just not the way you run a public meeting, okay? So just please, that one rule, but come on up.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Great.
You've got a hard job, especially tonight with all these people here. This isn't even what I wanted to talk about, but I just wanted to express this thought.
Excuse me, sir. Just get your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Price, 714 East Wallace, Coeur d'Alene, 831... Richard Price, 714 East Wallace, Coeur d'Alene, 83814. Went through the airport the other day, and they took GSR kind of swab samples from my hands in a full pat-down, so that address part wasn't a big deal. But anyway, they really did. But, you know, one of the complaints I hear about this parking thing, and I think she just kind of mentioned it, but there's no easy answer, is that, you know, the residents around here, they want to get down to the park, the field or somewhere else for lunch, or to have something to eat, or take a walk, and they're usually there for less than two hours, let's say. You know what I mean? So they want that time to spend with their family and stuff like that, and they don't have to pay for it. Maybe rightly so, because they pay some taxes on that too, right? They do, I think. At least, that's what I think I read. But anyway, um, and then, so, but, but then the other side of the coin, so if you say, "Well, okay, let's make the first couple hours free and maybe charge more," or whatever to offset it after that, people from out of town, they're going to fill that whole park up, and then where do the people go? You know what I mean? So there's no easy answer. But I just wanted to express that point. Have a lot of compassion for the citizens in the town, but how do you address that? Because, you know, if you make the first two hours free, well, everybody's going to park there, including the out-of-town people, you know what I mean? And the people from in-town and stuff, there won't be any parking. But anyway, that's, that's what I hear, is that they just want to go down there for lunch or something. They got to pay two or four bucks, or whatever it is, I don't even know what it is, to go down there to have lunch or take a walk, you know what I mean? So there's no easy answer, but that's a big complaint that I hear, and I can understand that. So you guys got a tough task to figure out how to fix that perfectly, beautifully. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here. My name is Cambria Ravston. I live at 567... And this is Liam. And this is Link. We live at 567 West Link Lane in Coeur d'Alene, 83814. And just a couple of points. While there is excellent points about the parking, you know, the available parking, the two-hour parking is still in close proximity in, directly in downtown, meaning that most of the people that are going to be using that parking are doing their shopping, they're not going to the park. The one time that I did use that, I ended up staying just a bit past two hours, because I had to walk down there, and I didn't allot for that time, and I got a ticket. And, well, that was my bad for not realizing what time it was. The downtown parking that is two hours free right now is directly related to the shopping there. That's, that's who your clientele is going to be. That's who's going to go down there and take up those spots. And especially during the summer months and the weekends, those parking spots are all taken by shoppers. So anybody that wants to make use of the McEwen Park, they have to, they have to either park down in that large parking area and pay for it, or they have to, the City Hall parking is, is relatively close, but you still have to walk a great distance. And again, with little ones, it's difficult, especially if you're packing a diaper bag and anything other than that. It is a great inconvenience and a deterrent. And if that parking's not available, which sometimes it's not, because Monday through Friday, if you happen to go down there, you know, there's, there's no parking available in certain spots because of the employee parking. If you have to park on residential streets, not only do you have to walk a further distance, but you're now blocking up the streets and making it more hazardous for people to drive. I know for me, it's, I hate driving down those streets, especially when we have events going on. I, most of the time, don't go anymore, because it's such a nightmare. If any, if you have any oncoming traffic, there's parking on both sides of those narrow streets, and you're going to hit somebody unless you're very careful. But it's, I got to imagine, it's got to be an inconvenience to the residents there, too, to always have people parked in front of them, just because they want to go to the park, or, you know? And then, there, there's still not a great amount of parking down by the lake itself. So if you want to go there for a day, or, you know, just for a little while, it's a great trek to do that. And if you're, if there's families, you are loaded with at least a half an hour hike, because you've got kids and you've got supplies. I'm not a single mother, you know? I don't, I don't have that. I have the blood, you know, I, I have, I, I'm lucky to have a little help in that regard, but it is still difficult. And I just wanted to share my experience, that since the two-hour parking has been eliminated, I haven't gone as much, like truly, because it would be, it was a nice relief in the evenings when I got home from work, to be able to take my kids, even just for a half an hour, and let them run off some energy to do something with them before we went home. And we live in an apartment.
You can keep going as long as you like.
Thank you. We live in an apartment, you know? And I know a lot of people here rent, you know? And you don't have the luxury of having a yard to let them run around. You don't have the luxury of having, you know, close neighbors, so, you know, you can let your kids run off their energy. That, that park has been a huge blessing to us, and, and so has Tubbs Hill especially. That is one of my treasured places to go. But I, I find, for the short times that I'm there to get reprieve, I can't do that cheaply anymore, and it does deter me. We're trying to save our homes, so.
Have you taken advantage of the parking that's right along here?
Along, you mean for the library and like the City Hall area?
All down here for, because that's quick access to the playground.
It is, but again, it's, it's, it is more of, part of it is the, the convenience, you know? It is a little bit tougher to do. But anyways, I was, I just wanted to share my experience with that, so, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up? If you don't, and we'll have as many people that would like to talk tonight as possible. If you don't get a chance to talk tonight, and everyone will get that chance, but if you want to send an email too to the city, we're going to accumulate all those comments, so welcome.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Dunham. I actually live in Hayden, 1496 West Cardinal. I've lived in Coeur d'Alene and Hayden for 23 years. There's so much concern for me, there's so many people who just hike Tubbs Hill sometimes daily, that just to go on a run for Tubbs Hill is going to cost them, if they go five times a week, it's going to be like 40 bucks to go for a run, which is crazy. And I see often at like 6:00 in the morning, like older people there that are most likely retired. Are they going to disappear off of Tubbs Hill? And can I ask questions, or do I just have to state?
Probably just, just comment, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know.
I wish I could, where do you ask? When do you get a chance to ask questions?
Go ahead.
She just asked the questions.
Okay.
I just answered it.
So my question is, all of these years that I've lived here, even when the, it changed and it was haggadons, you know, they had the little drive-in and drive-out for two hours, that's always been here since I've been here. Why are we changing it?
Well, there's financial reasons. It's, it's a user fee, and parking is, is a user fee to pay. All of the money that's collected for parking goes for the operation of parks and for parking facilities. There's going to be an ever-increasing demand for that. So you have a, it's a, it's a cost and revenue question. So we have costs, and those costs are going to increase to operate our parks and our parking. Where do you get the revenue to do that? Does that revenue come from property taxes, or does it come from user fees? And we try to balance that out.
Right.
While still providing the free parking. Now, Tubbs Hill, you know, there's, maybe if I give up the secret, it won't be great parking anymore, but, but on the east side of Tubbs Hill, there's a fantastic little parking area there for people that want to park there and access the hill. There still is, and I am downtown in Coeur d'Alene, and I want you to believe that I've studied this parking issue, because I, you know, I, I understand people's concerns. And so I walk every day, and I walk these parking lots to check out the availability. And there, there is still a lot of availability. Now, I'm not going to tell you that there aren't times where this free parking lot is not full. There are times when it's full. But there's times where it was full before, when both McEwen was full and this is full. So again, we get into the situation where we're never going to develop the perfect parking space, but we've gone to some great lengths to create more free parking spots in this area down here. We have cleared out 15 vehicles, 15 city vehicles. So on weekends and evenings, we opened up 15 more free parking spots down in here. We have asked city employees, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, who were parking here in free parking spots, we transferred them over to park into the McEwen Garage, to create 30 more free parking spots for people to use in this area. So we have freed up 45 spots to be used. So we're making a good effort, but like Dan said, it's something that we can, need to continue to study. But for those people that, that love to get up on Tubbs Hill, there still is the availability. Now, I'm not going to tell you that, again, that it's always available, because there are some times when it's really busy.
Right.
But there's availability to park in this area for free all day long.
I guess, I just worry about the slippery slope, you know? There's free parking right here by City Hall, but how much is going to be there when there's paid parking? It's going to be like a zoo, and it's going to, pretty soon, it's going to go away. And pretty soon, it's a dollar now, it's going to go to two, and it's going to go to three, and it's going to go to four. And people, you know, this thing that talks about how it was the Business Association that made this free two-hour parking, because businesses want everybody to be able to come down and give them businesses on Sherman, what's going to happen when none of us come down? Because we don't want to pay for parking. And I just worry that we're going to be like Spokane and Seattle, just know, pretty soon, there's not going to be any parking. And, and right now, I mean, we can't even afford to buy houses in Coeur d'Alene. Everybody's coming from everywhere else. Let, let us like park here. And I'm not getting mad at you, I'm just mad at the whole.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm mad at the whole idea. And my, my thought is, we've done it this long, let's figure out how to keep doing it.
But we.
Why, how have we done it this long?
We do have a very, very nice park system, right?
Yeah.
And parks, as they age, require maintenance. Every, for McEwen, McEwen was a very expensive park to build, taxpayers paid for that.
Right.
And I acknowledge it. And they pay right now for the, the day-to-day maintenance. They do. But this is a very expensive park. Every day that goes by, there's, there's.
Like McEwen Park?
Yeah, McEwen Park.
Right.
There is, there is maintenance that occurs that needs to be paid for somewhere down the road. Now, it could be a year, it could be two years down the road, but so, again, it's, it's a cost and revenue question.
Well, and I'm, I'll just say one last thing. Years ago, we all voted whether to put that park in. Some people loved it, some people didn't. I did. I've got kids, I'm excited for McEwen Park. A lot of people didn't want taxpayers' money to go towards that park. If this would have been known, how many people would have voted for this park to be here? Not me. I want Tubbs. I want to come down here for free. It is not worth the trade-off. There's parks everywhere. And so I just look at long-term planning, and it looks like the long-term planning to me wasn't there. And now we have to fix it, and I think we need to find different ways to fix it. And that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Baber. I live at 6843 Kalispell Drive here at Coeur d'Alene. Most people have touched on a lot of things to do with the parking. I just want to touch on a few things that, and some stuff I may not be completely accurate on, because I may have been misinformed, but I want to talk about a couple experiences that I've had because of this new parking rule in the last couple months. I've lived in this community for 45-plus years. I have eight children, and I have two grandchildren that have enjoyed this community parks immensely. We've visited many, if not all, of the community parks in this area. I basically come to discuss the impact that the free parking that was egregiously yanked out from underneath this community has had on myself and my family and the community that is around me. Way back when they wanted to build that 20-plus million-dollar park, many, including me, were opposed. I could see well past the actual installation and, and I could see past the installation, I had doubts about the upkeep of the park and how that was going to take place without increasing the taxes of the person, of the people in the community. We, as a community, were assured that the maintenance was not going to be an issue, and that there was going to be implied free parking for the community. I understand that there's a cost to maintaining these well-loved areas, but we were assured that the parking would be, or that the park would be maintained under current funds at that time, and not by charging fees to a community in addition to the taxes that we already pay. I find it stifling the amount of tax dollars that are wasted, and I'm wondering if some of the money can be reallocated to replace or fix the park's infrastructure. Funds such as building a new parking area off-campus, enforcing the employees of City Hall to park there, only to allowing them to use city vehicles to park at City Hall, it's a egregious use of tax dollars to me and funds. It seems to be able to make, it, it's, it seems like you're just trying to be able to make a few more bucks on the, on the parking at the park. And I wonder if the cost of building a whole new parking lot and having people park away from here, and only being able to bring in city vehicles, and the cost of the vehicles and the maintenance, and the maintenance of the parking lot, if some of those fees wouldn't actually pay for the upkeep of the infrastructure and the maintenance of this park. On the Fourth of July, my experience was that I was coming downtown to visit friends, not stay down for the Fourth of July festivities. But at 4:30, I was driving down the road, and I noticed that all of the roads were being blocked to the NIC parking, the dirt parking, and all of that parking area, all of that free parking down there. All of that area was, was being blocked off. I didn't really realize the ramifications of that until I ended up in the neighborhood of the friends that we were attempting to visit, and there were cars completely up and down both sides of all of these homeowners in, in these communities just north of town. For us, not a big deal. We ended up parking like five blocks away from our friends from where they live, and we walked to their house. We had a friend who's an amputee. He couldn't walk five blocks. He has a disabled placard, but what good does that do him? He can't park downtown. All these people looking for free parking, because they don't want to pay for this parking, now moved, you know, up there. And so we ended up having to take his car and park it for him and bring his car back. There was a $20 lot located near the place that we were going to, but we chose not to pay $20 to park for a couple hours to visit friends. We weren't downtown for the festivities. The lot was almost empty. At 8:30, when we left that night, the lot was still almost empty. I actually witnessed and videoed people trying to break into the back of that lot with your attendant, which was a young girl on the other side, and they were trying to remove the barricades so that they could get into that lot and park. When we attempted to leave a two-lane street, the streets were down to one lane, we got almost down the street, and a car was coming up the street, we had to back an entire block backwards with kids running in and out of parked cars, kids having lemonade stands on the corner, and it was extremely unsafe. It was a dangerous situation trying to back down streets that are completely clogged. One of the other incidences that we had was our family, along with 55 other families, volunteered for two sectors of the Ironman race, which we have done now for several, several years. It was much of a slap in the face when we arrived down here to find that it was a $15 parking charge for us volunteering for our school or community and our children. The parking lot was virtually empty, so I don't think that we were like the only ones that thought that. Again, we parked uptown in the neighborhood, and we walked. Now, after Fourth of July, I see that that's a real concern, that everybody's being pushed up into the neighborhoods, and it's not safe. For us, the 55 families, we'd be better off to donate the $15 to our program, they would make more money. And then we used to volunteer for Hoop Fest, and we often go back and volunteer for Hoop Fest, and we don't have to pay for anything. And so that's how it's like negatively affected our family. I had some real concerns over the fact that Diamond receives 30, the 35% of their tickets. Downtown council, I think, receives some percentage of that too as well. I don't even know who else receives percentages of the parking and the tickets from down here, but I have a hard time believing that the city is making that much money to support the stuff that they need. We're developing and we're building all over town. I just, it's, it's hard for me to fathom that we need, that the revenue is like, that little amount of revenue is so much more important than the community that already pays the taxes here. I also find it extremely concerning that the people who are giving us tickets make money off the more tickets that they give us. And that's putting money before the community when it should be community-driven instead of money-driven. I wanted to just thank you guys for having us here today and listening to some of the things that we have to say. I know that this is a problem that needs to be fixed, you know, that there's problems. We need to have money from somewhere besides just taxpayers. We do have an influx of new people coming to this area. There's no easy way to resolve it, like you said, that's going to make everybody happy. I didn't know that we couldn't have Cootenay County license plates not be, you know, have us be able to park free just because we have Cootenay County license plates, but maybe something like the state parks do, where you pay a fee and you get a sticker attached to your license plates. And I think some of us would be, I'd be willing to pay a flat fee, but like some of them said, if we're coming down here to do Tubbs Hill five days a week, then, you know, half of those times, you might get free parking, but then to pay the other half, for us, for my family, that isn't like this huge, big deal. But for many, many families in this area, that is a big deal. A lot of our money comes from tourism. I'm wondering if, the same as we block off the road down by Sherman Park, if maybe those fees can apply during certain months of the year, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then when it goes back to our community, which a lot of us come down here during the off-season anyway, then maybe the fees wouldn't take place then, and we could still generate that revenue from out-of-town people. And so, I think that there's a lot of different avenues that maybe could be looked at other than just flat, "Give it to us free." And so, that was all. I just wanted to, like, give you guys just some of my experience with the effects of, of what this, what this decision has done to all of your housing going north. And one thing that I didn't even mention is the friends that we were visiting in the community are elderly people, and they have had so much parking around their house that their elderly friends can't even come visit. They drive by and they can't find a parking place within two blocks of the house, and they can't walk that far. And so-
And where's, where would that be? Where's that house?
And, you know, I don't know the exact street, so it's, would be, so that big parking lot behind the courthouse, so it would be the next block up. So, up from there. And so, and that's where we went to visit our friends. We had parked like five blocks away. That's where they were parked on both sides. It ended up being one-lane traffic, which was like, that was scary for us. I mean, it was scary for us driving, like, we almost felt like you need to stand behind the car and flag them just to make sure that you don't run anybody over. But I thought it was important. I think everybody's touching on the money, who can afford it, who can't afford it, and that kind of thing. And I, I think there's some ramifications from this that maybe we don't hear a lot about, and so I wanted to be sure that, that that was heard.
Great, thank you.
And I'll thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I ask Troy a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Kiki.
Just real quick, Troy, I, this is about the second or third time I've heard this commission, or thirty-five percent, or whatever, and I read that contract. I don't see that there, but I'm wondering if you could do the research on that and make sure it gets added, the accurate answer to the, to the questions page for everyone?
Thirty-five percent is if the, if it's later than two weeks.
So, it's not a commission?
It is not.
It's an incentive.
It's the violation charges collected. After the first fourteen days from issuance of a parking violation, the parking administrator, which would be Diamond, would be entitled to a sum equal to thirty-five percent of that violation.
So, if they pay the ticket within fourteen days, Diamond does not get thirty-five percent? If they pay it after fourteen days, they get thirty-five percent?
Of the ticket.
Of the ticket. And if they don't, if it goes into collections, what happens? If they don't pay the, if somebody doesn't pay the ticket, how does Diamond get that thirty-five percent?
There is no thirty-five percent to Diamond then.
Okay.
Because there was no money transacted.
Okay.
Then it's turned over to collection.
Okay. Can we make sure to add that to that, just so that it's clear for someone who didn't, who wasn't here or didn't hear that? Thank you.
Others wish to come up?
Hi, my name's Roger Garlock. I live at 1495 Westminster Avenue, right here in Coeur d'Alene. I wanted to come up here and support Councilman Gookin on what he talked about earlier about getting support from his peers. I've heard a lot of political speak, you know, it sounds like it's kicking the can down the road, further studies. His honor, the, the mayor here even had said, Councilman Gookin asked for further studies. I did not hear him ask for that. I heard him ask for it to be readdressed, because clearly, the public is not happy with it.
Dan, you want to clarify, what was, what was your question?
Oh, I just, I just think that there's some more that we can do.
Right.
And one of my follow-up questions that I was going to ask later, but I'm asking now, is Troy, what is the next step? So, if, obviously, we have people who are concerned about parking, you're taking a lot of notes, council's taking a lot of notes, so from here, does it go to the Parking Commission? I mean, what, where is, what is the process at this point?
Yes, this input is going to be captured in a minute. We'll take it to the Parking Commission. As I'd stated, we're looking at the new Coeur d'Alene Avenue parking garage. It has expenses associated with it as well. The third hour being just a dollar doesn't generate a whole lot of income for that particular asset. And then, of course, we will be looking at what is taking place with the other changes. We haven't talked a lot about Independence Point, but that is the highest-cost parking lot, and this year, with sunny weather, it generates a significant amount of revenue, which will help the parking funds.
So, to answer your question, Dan, we're, we're going to accumulate all the comments, all the notes, and it'll go back through the Parking Commission. They'll study it, and, and then it'll wind its way back to this body.
Yeah, and that's, and that's pretty much, there, there has to be a process. We can't just, I mean, as, as like Kiki brought up earlier, we can't make a decision here because it has to be on an agenda. But it would be improper to place it on an agenda without having it being vetted by the Parking Commission and then going through General Services Committee and then coming back to council. But I definitely think it will.
Yeah, yeah. I guess that was the point I was getting to, to support, support you, Councilman Gookin, it was to get it back on agenda. But as I've been sitting back here, I was listening, I'm glad a lot of, I mean, a couple of the individuals mentioned the controversy of the park to begin with. I've lived here for sixteen years. I remember the controversy of that park, to the point that there was recall elections. And, you know, I think of the promises made by, you know, city government at the time. It, it's already a lot of, I'll speak for myself, as, you know, one of the locals, the changes, the young woman who got very emotional about the changes of our town, and that just comes with news, and people learn how great we are here. But as one of those locals, you, you feel isolated from downtown. We want to appreciate this part of Coeur d'Alene as much as anybody, but we're starting, I already feel isolated from downtown. A couple dollars, he keeps saying just a dollar, you know, it's like, and it's just, it's just that, it's that feeling of that, as Keith Boe pointed out, that we're not wanted. I want, I want to feel embraced by downtown as much as anybody. The tourists, you know, I saw in the, the notes written up that it's, there's only some, you know, most of the plates are out-of-state plates and all that type of stuff, not Cootenay County plates. They weren't the ones who voted for the park. They weren't the ones paying the taxes for the park. So, I don't really care who's in it more than we are. It's still about us. It's always about us, not a four-month period of when tourists are here from May through September. It's, it's about that long-term thing, feeling embraced by our town, and, you know, that, that's the big thing to me. I don't like to feel isolated from down here. It's not just a dollar. It's, you know, it's just the whole concept of, of where this is. It, it feels like it is a domino effect, the first, you know, oh, yeah, you point out the, the other parking lots that are available. At what point does the study say, "Oh, we're going to start charging for this one, we're going to start charging for this one," and just dominos and dominos? Very often, government does not roll back. They're not going to say, you know, they, how often does it roll back and say, "We're going to give back that free parking?" No, it just builds on itself, builds on itself, builds on itself. We all know that. When I hear the comments of further studies, kick the can down on the road, that makes me think that we're just relying on the short-term memory of the voters, as if we don't remember the original controversy of this park, we don't remember the promises made to us. We're going to remember this meeting right here of all the public talking about not appreciating, you know, that we don't want the, the two, free parking taken away, because it's not nineteen forty-two, it's not about paid parking. Nobody here has said they don't want to pay for parking. People have said they, they want that free parking. They're two different things. That's great that parking, paid parking has been around since nineteen forty-two. That's not the issue. It's about that two-hour paid par, uh, free parking. It's feeling embraced by downtown as the people paid for it. You know, and so, I, I, I think that, you know, I'm, I support Councilman Gookin of, of that. It needs to be readdressed by the council. Whatever that tip needs to happen to, to make that happen, I would like to see that occur. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah. So, Woody, you were here during the time, and I, I wasn't here, Dan was here, but I, I know that, that, that's always talked about the promise, right? And I, I wasn't here, but that there's the, the promise of free parking and those, you guys were here. What, what, what was prom, was there anything promised? What was said back at, so we're talking twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen?
The only promise that I recall at all was the free boat parking. We're always going to have free boat parking. You pay to put your boat in the water, you get to park. We can't bind future councils to tell them that something's going to be free forever. It doesn't work that way. We can't do that.
And Dan, is that, is that your recollection too?
There were lots of promises when it came to McEwen. I mean, above all, Mayor Bloom promised that it would be a world-class park and that we'd be all proud of it. There was a promise that there would be an equal number of parking spaces between the old lot and the new lot. There were just, and I can't think of, of all, but there were, there were plenty of promises. But you got, you've got to understand, what Woody said is dead-on, is that, you know, government generally isn't in the business of promises. Politicians are, but government doesn't make promises. So, you know, when something comes up, we can change, your elected officials can change whatever was promised before, which happens a lot. That's why they say politicians and promises. So, a, as far as, as, using the word "promise," there's not a lot of weight to that. But you do have a choice. Every two years, you can vote, and that's your choice. So, you, you may not be able to change everything. I mean, when, when I got into office, it was because Ron and I and Steve Adams promised that we would push for a public vote on McEwen, and we got voted down. So, we fulfilled our promise, but it, it wasn't passed on. So, you can still push things. Doing this, Roger just asked a, a great question. What do we do? What's the first step? Showing up. Awesome step. That shows that there's a lot of, of, of interest in this topic, and there will be reaction to that. You know, having, having a huge crowd here really helps. But as far as when McEwen was put in and when promises are, Woody is spot-on. I mean, and, and there was someone earlier, I forget who said it, that said that we can raise parking fees again. Yes, a future council can raise parking fees again, as long as you are active citizens and you come and you tell council what you want, that won't happen. You hope it won't happen.
Get one more fact.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just, I'm, I've been kind of the watchdog of the facts here because I, I just want to make sure everybody is informed. There was another thing that's been brought up a couple of times, that there's data out there that says that there's more tourists and the tourists are welcome and the, and the locals are not. Does Diamond track that? Is there, is there, is this a, I guess what I'm trying to get at, is that a, is that a trackable item, or is that a, a theory or an opinion?
I guess, I, I've done a, a little research on that, and that there will be date, there will be data through license plate recognition. So, now, you see that little car that goes around and reads people's license plates? There will be data that'll be captured that, in the future, can tell where people are from, whether they're from Idaho, whether they're from Washington, whether they're from California. Can't do it right now.
Okay.
The technology is not there, but we're hoping in the future to be able to capture that. So, if you wanted to ask, okay, where are the people, if we get license plate recognition in, in McEwen, which I hope to do, because that's the most efficient way to do it? If we get that in McEwen, we can tell where people are from. How many are from Washington? How many are from Oregon? How many are from California? So, we'll be able to do that, but we can't do that right now.
But we can't, so it's just, it's right now, just hypothetical that that's what's happening?
Yeah.
That there's more tourists staying there than locals staying there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. Can we add that to the?
Yeah.
Sorry. I just want it all documented, thank you.
And I realize we-
Thank you.
We may have some more folks that talk, but I guess a couple of things I would like to respond to. One thing, I, I am the council liaison to the Parking Commission, so there is a process that we need to honor. We have volunteers who were, spend a lot of time on the Parking Commission, and this is not something that they dreamt up overnight. It's over the course, frankly, of, of years, and they, and it's never a finished product. So, they are going to always take a look at things, and frankly, some, some of the rates have gone up, some have gone down, and they change, you know, target areas of some of that, so it is not fixed in place. And I can say, I guess, from, from me, as a council member, being the liaison, you can be guaranteed that I will certainly make sure that they're aware of this, and, and I think I can safely say that they already are. You know, there's been some comments about, you know, the, for the, kind of the folks who've been here a long time and all of that. Well, I was born about three blocks away from here in the Iron Horse parking lot, a little over sixty-eight years ago when it was the General Hospital, so I know this. You know, I've grown up here, actually with the Stampso family, lived on Garden Avenue. We were their neighbors, right across the street. Our four kids, we raised four kids there. Now, we bring our grandkids and great-grandkid and our dogs down here, and frankly, I guess from my perspective and as an old-timer, I find that, you know, this stuff is just about as close as the, the main lot. In my primary career, for another, about two weeks, I'm the director of the Area Agency on Aging, so I work with seniors for a living, and actually, we work with disabled communities. So, I am very tuned in to the issues, and it is always an ongoing balancing act. And I've, well, I've served here, I've served on school board, I've served as county clerk, so, I don't know, twenty-some years. And I have to tell you, over the years, a lot of time, we get the input of, you know, where you can charge user fees, do that over property taxes. And it's always going to take some combination of both, because as we all know, there truly, truly, isn't such a thing as a free lunch. And there isn't, you know, when we offer a section of some free parking, of course, ultimately, it's not free, but we, we subsidize it and make up for it in other ways, so, so there are trade-offs. And I do appreciate the folks, how many people have come, and I also appreciate that some of you recognize that this isn't an easy thing to grapple with, but this isn't the last it's going to come up. When, when we had the, some of the Parking Commission meetings, actually, there, there was input saying, gee, it should be higher here or there. So, what we have here is a compromise, and nothing is set in stone, just like some prior commission or council couldn't tell us, you've got to have it free forever. We can't tell somebody in the future that, oh, you can never raise it, or you could never lower it. So, it's always going to be an interactive process, but I also agree, it's way more interactive if the citizens are involved, so.
Thank you, Dan. Others, anyone else wishing to come up?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but being that I'm a woman, I can't keep my mouth shut. My name is Trish Malsha, and I live at North Coeur d'Alene, 3654 Second. I look at this as a completely different perspective, and nobody else has really brought this up. I was an appraiser for about three decades and did a lot of feasibility studies for different reasons, and I don't know what the solution is, but I see problems. The free parking that, that was, that was noted in, in some of these areas, people in my age group, we're not going to walk four blocks. We're not going to walk five blocks to go to a restaurant or, or do shopping downtown. The two-hour parking, that's pretty good if you want to do some shopping. It's pretty good if you want to go have a meal with friends, but you can't do both because two hours just isn't, isn't long enough. So, so I don't know, I don't know what, what the trade-off is. I was down here last week, met some friends. Parking was about twenty-five dollars for the time I was down here. And we, we did an activity, then we ate, so it was basically a hundred-dollar day.
So, where would, where would you have parked for, that would have been twenty-five?
Parked down at, at the Point. We did, we did the River Cruise, then we did lunch, and, you know, it was, it was a good twenty-five-dollar parking fee for, for the day, plus the cruise, plus lunch. My age group goes to a lot of restaurants all the time. We like retail therapy. But it's getting easier and easier and easier to go other places. Go to Riverstone, go to Hayden, go, I mean, you just, you pull right up, you park your car and you don't worry about it. And you patronize those restaurants, you patronize those retail outlets because it's more of an obstacle course to come downtown. And everybody loves the downtown. It's charming, there are some great retail outlets down here, but if it, if the obstacles are too great, it's going to have an adverse effect on the, on the restaurant owners, the merchants. I've seen towns grow beautifully and I've seen towns die on the vine. And you don't want to have obstacles. The new parking garage, maybe for young families, maybe for people traveling in groups, is fine. I'm not going to park in that garage by myself and walk through the parking garage as, as an older person. I mean, everybody in town can outrun me, so I'm not going to park there. The City Hall, up there on Northwest Boulevard, I'm not going to park there and walk downtown to go to lunch or walk town, walk downtown to go to dinner. It's just too far. And I have some mobility issues, so I'm not going to do it. And all of my friends are, are dealing with the same thing. We're at the knee replacement, the hip replacement age. We're going to go where it's convenient.
We're kind of all at that age up here, except for Kiki.
Not me.
And so, I, I don't know what the solution is, but I think it needs to be looked at from not just using the park, not just paying to use the park. It, it needs to be looked at from the whole community and if you want the merchants to thrive as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Come on up.
Yes, my name is Michael Browning. I'm at 4740 West Reeves here in Coeur d'Alene. Just to give you a little bit backstory about me, I grew up in Seaside. And if you've been to Seaside recently, you'll notice that they have an abundancy of free parking. How do they do it? No idea. It's not my job. All I know is it is nice to go somewhere, park for free, walk half a block, and there's the candy man, there's the donut shop, there's the Tulte World's, there's the beach. All of these are amazing. And it's free parking to go see. So, it's something that we could easily, easily accomplish here. Like I said, I don't know how they do it. That would be on these folks here, you guys here to determine?
Probably have to take a look at their property taxes.
Oh, I don't even want to go there. I rent for a reason. But back in 2014, I had won a trip on a Halloween cruise. Left at Independence Point at about 7:30. I parked, I was told cover, or parking was being taken care of. I came back, found a nice little ticket on my window, had no idea what it was for. Called Diamond Parking the next day. They told me what it was for. I told them, well, you're Seattle company, I'm an Idaho resident, you, you can essentially, you know, I, I told them off. A week and a half later, I totaled my vehicle, shattered my femur, got a 1,440-millimeter intramedullary rod that runs through there now. July 4th of 2016, I was running with, or I went and ran in the, the Fourth of July Parade with the NIC Veterans Group. I just had corrective surgery. It was October of 2015 on my femur. I had to park with my daughter, who was three, four at the time. I had to park at NIC and walk all the way over to where the staging area was, which was back over here. That was an insane amount of pain to be put on my leg. So, when the lady before me, when she said, folks that are elderly, they're having issues, walk in the distance, people with disabilities are having issues, walk in the distance. The countless mothers that have been up here said, hey, walking this distance with my kids is painful because it, it truly is. You, you shuttle a three, four-year-old, two blocks, they're tired, they're cranky, they want to go home, you're tired, you're just done with the day, and you just got to the park. But now, you've got to do the exact same thing going back. I've, I own a roadside assistance company and all I've seen is I've, have had issues with Diamond Parking. I've actually went to go do a jump start at Independence Point. While I was there, the little car came around, guy got out, said, hey, hey, what's going on? I told him, you know, got to give this gentleman a jump start. He goes, okay, well, it's, it needs to hurry up and be gone. Yeah, okay, I kind of got that. That's why I'm here. I've been there for lockouts before. There was a gentleman that called me, said, hey, just locked my, keys in my car, my wallet's in there, I can't even pay for parking, and the Diamond guy just wrote me a ticket. He wasn't even there for 10 minutes, didn't have his little parking stub on his dash, and he just, just ended up getting the ticket for it. I showed up, unlocked his vehicle. He goes, oh, hey, see, look, he's here now. Diamond guy goes, oh, I can't do nothing. It's, it's a gross overreach, is what it is. There's little accountability for it. And like we've had multiple, mobile, sorry, can't even speak right now. Multiple people say, why can't we have something that's the free two-hour parking? Just open that back up. Or, I don't understand why the Cootenay Plate would be an issue. I mean, if you're from Cootenay County, you've paid your taxes that have gone towards the park, gone towards city, gone towards, you know, essentially everything in the county. Look at how Waste Management does it. If you have an Idaho Plate, it doesn't cost you anything to run to the dump. You have a Washington Plate, you pay. My brother-in-law has called me and said, hey, can you drive my truck so I can go to the dump? Because he has a Washington Plate, he has Washington ID. And I've said, no, sorry dude, can't do it.
That's a, that's a county facility. The dump is a county facility. That's why you can go there with K-plates.
Coeur d'Alene resides in Cootenay County though, so you should be able to still use a K-plate and let it park for free.
But Coeur d'Alene is 52,000 residents and the county's like 170. So, there's, there's a difference there.
There, there is a substantial difference, but Cootenay, Coeur d'Alene's growing faster than Spokane is. So, I mean, if we want to, if we want to grow with the big dogs, we got to have the same rules. They do.
Spokane's parking is-
Spokane is, is ridiculous.
Yeah. I don't think you want that.
Spokane might have been a bad idea.
Yeah.
Very bad comparison. But I, I do understand that it is difficult, that you guys do have yourselves quite the task ahead of you. I mean, nobody wants to pay for something that they should be able to use for free. I mean, that'd be, I mean, heck, we charge for water, but, you know, it's something we've got to live with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Steve Adams, not that Steve Adams, but newer Steve Adams that's moved in here. 3861 North Player Drive in Coeur d'Alene. I agree with everything that's been said on the parking. Hate to see it go up like this. There's a lot of local residents that suffer because of this. We're having a tremendous growth, which is good and bad. From an economic standpoint, it's fantastic. From an infrastructure standpoint, it's just mind-boggling what it takes to make all this happen. Seems like everywhere we look, there's new subdivisions going up, just a cul-de-sac. There are a couple of streets and new houses are going up like crazy. These new houses require permits, I assume. There, there has to be some revenue, some good revenue coming in to the city, the county, the state, for all these new residents coming in and this growth that we're, this phenomenal growth that we're going through. But what I really want to address is, could be just a small elephant in the room, but it was, it was one thing when I first saw the rates go up, but something else when I noticed the signs and said that somebody in Washington was, who was going to take my dollars for the parking fees. Now, it strikes me, it's kind of rare that we don't have enough businesses in Idaho, much less local, that could not handle the revenue stream and the enforcement of taking care of the parking situation and not worried about where that 35% is of the excess fine that's going to be on the. So, whatever gross amount that they're actually getting, or the net profit that they're making from us in Seattle because of what happens here in Coeur d'Alene, those dollars should stay here, in this state at the least. If you can't get somebody out of Boise or, I mean, there's a lot of intelligent people in this, in this city and the surrounding area. And there's a lot of angst. There was enough angst from seeing that the parking rates went up, but when you see that, that somebody out of Washington, you might as well say California, is handling it, it's like stabbing you in the back, or even Texas. I mean, it's like, do it here, leave our dollars here. Don't send it someplace else.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's an important point. I'm glad you brought that up, Troy. Would you talk about the, the process that we go through and, and when we selected Diamond as the, as the parking administrator? The truth is that there isn't a lot of parking administrative companies out there. There, there's Diamond and a couple of others, but it, Troy, why don't you just talk a little bit about that?
Yes, Mayor. Council, you're regulated by the laws and that's what we followed in the state of Idaho. It's a state statute that says a city's required by law to solicit bids for contracts for services over $50,000, which this contract is. Diamond Parking, when we did that solicitation in 2015, was the only bid the city of Coeur d'Alene received to provide the services as per the request. So, that was, we recruited very hard and again, there's not a lot of companies that do that. The one in Boise chose not to bid in 2015.
And, and keep in mind that I, I'm a number cruncher, I'm an accountant, and so I've looked a lot at these numbers. And the number out there is that Diamond takes about 25% of the gross parking revenue. And of the 25% they take, they pay for all the labor, they pay for credit card discount, they pay for repairs to all of the machines. So, there's a lot of costs involved in there. I do know that they employ local people, the people that are out checking the parking are local people as well. So, that there, it's a catch-22 situation is that we would love, we love to have all of our dollars stay right here, but it, it would be more expensive, Troy, you'd probably agree to this, if the city was to manage it ourselves, it would be much more expensive to do that. And so, that's why we went the route of a parking professional to do that. But out of that percentage, they pay for all of those costs involved, just so we get that out in the open there. So, anyone else wishing to come up tonight? Come on up. Tom, I'm betting you rode your bike?
Yep.
Yeah.
My name's Tom Morgan. I live at 901 North 16th Street. What I'm hearing in this room, as much as the frustration with the parking is, I was born here. I've lived here my whole life. A lot of the people behind me, many of the thousands of people that, that live inside the city limits, born here. This grew, grew this community up. And so, it, it feels a little frustrating and this, this parking increase feels like one more stab when you're someone who's looking at the, the cost of a house escaping your grasp. When you're looking at your children can't afford to buy a home in the community that they, that they live in. And it, it feels like we're more concerned with the new person driving into town with a U-Haul from some other place with a fistful of cash that can afford to smack cash down $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 for, for a house in this town. And, and again, the, those of us who, who grew up blocks away from here, it's escaping our, it's escaping our grasp. And so, it, it hurts, it's emotional, and this, this, now you're putting the, the park out of grasp. And while that doesn't necessarily affect me, because I ride my bike everywhere, so it's chained up outside, there's no parking for a bicycle, and, and I take full advantage of that. I, I hope you guys realize the, the emotion that's behind this. People don't remember what you say. They remember how you make them feel. And how this feels is, again, it's just, it's just one more stab to, to us who have been here forever. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else wishing to come up? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Susan Crowe. I live at 4011 North 21st Street here in Coeur d'Alene. I didn't grow up here, but I've lived here for 20 years. So, I've seen a lot of the changes that have occurred. I'm a little frustrated with all of the complaints. I get that for some people who have disabilities or if you're trying to deal with children, maybe there are some concerns that need to be addressed. However, I come down into this area a lot to hike Tubbs Hill, to go to the park, to go downtown, and I am almost 68 years old, so I'm not a spring chicken, but I can walk. But the other point is that there have been some really fantastic improvements down here. There's more parking down here than we ever had before. And there's free parking. There's the huge lots out here, both levels, the parking up in front of the library, there's park, free parking. This is one of the few towns I know where you can still park free along all of the streets downtown. So, I feel like the city has tried their darndest to accommodate people and to keep free parking available while still having to finance this and still having to deal with the influx of people coming into town that are tourists or who are from Hayden or Post Falls or Spokane who are using the facility. So, there is some free parking, but by the same token, we have to pay for this stuff somehow. I think part of the issue too is that McEwen Field is probably used more now than it ever was. It's very popular. If you go out here, look at the diversity of people using the park. There are young people, kids, couples, teenagers, elderly people. I see people using every part of this area. And I think it's been beneficial and I think it's beautiful. And I, I just want to point out the opposite side of this argument. So, I just felt like nobody was paying attention to the positives that are going on. There's only the negative comments because somehow, you know, it's not free, everything's not free. Well, we're growing and we get a lot of tourists that bring a lot of money into this town and we have to deal with it. So, I just wanted to take a moment to represent those facts as well.
Thank you. Someone here was going to come up?
My name is Marty Samford. I'm 1405 Progress in Hayden. I'm a new kid on the block here. Been here only four years, moved from Boise area, love it up here. I just have one comment I would like to make. I, in the future, there's going to be more growth, a lot of growth. I've seen it in four years since I've been here. And one of the things that excited me when I came up here was seeing the beautiful skateboard thing that you have for the kids here. I was really pleased to see that. And I guess my word to the council, I'd encourage you to continue thinking ahead for the youth. We don't want them going to like big cities have where they're, where they have all the black areas. I don't see a lot of dark areas here in Coeur d'Alene for which I'm very thankful. And coming from a city where they do have more of that stuff because there's not enough for the youth to do. So, I guess where this fits in with the parking thing is, when you look ahead, we may have to raise it even more, but consider the youth, that we don't price them out of our beauty. The beaches, the, the skateboard parks, whatever it is, keep the youth in your, in your vision. That is my word. Thank you for having us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Come on up.
Carrie Westbrook, 3105 North Fourth, Coeur d'Alene. So, I've only lived here for four years also. I'm from Sandpoint and I've lived here, lived in Coeur d'Alene, Sandpoint, all my life. One thing I can tell you is that Sandpoint got rid of Diamond Parking, thank goodness. They had them for a year, figured out how to do without them and got rid of them. And I'd like to see you try to do that also. The other thing I'd like to bring up is the mayor was talking about plate recognition. I still have Bonner County Plates. Why do I, I don't have to get rid of them. The state of Idaho says, as long as I live in Idaho, I can keep them, and I will. But if you're going to look at plate recognition and say- and say, "I live in Coeur d'Alene, but I bought a county plate, so I can't get free parking," if you choose to do that in the future, take that into consideration. Because I live here, I pay taxes here, I'm a part of the... I'm a part of Coeur d'Alene. So keep that in mind.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I make a brief announcement?
Okay.
This is just from a technical point of view. Every time you pound on this, that's what they're hearing on TV and on the feed, and it blocks out what you're saying. So try not to pound on the podium.
Should we put something else up there that could pound on?
I vote for Dan.
Anyone else? Come on up.
My name is Andrew Sarver. I live at 7304 Corseales Parkway, Coeur d'Alene. And my wife has... We have two kids together. We have a three-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old. They're both very active, and she likes to take them to the park. I know that a lot of people say it's just a dollar, it's just $2, it's just $3. We live on $150 a week for groceries. That's $6. That may be two trips to the park is 4% of our grocery budget for the week. And it makes a difference. It's scary to think about utilizing that parking structure you guys did down there. I think you're calling Coeur d'Alene Avenue is a great structure. I think it's a great idea. I would be for the free parking being moved back to McEwen and charged for that parking structure, because I think, if you look at the map that you guys posted earlier, you guys have blocked out McEwen Park. The entire... Everything right adjacent to McEwen is paid parking.
No, the lot here is...
No, the library is not, but we want to encourage...
The library lot, we have a library lot up above, and then this lot down below.
The vast majority of the parking that is adjacent to McEwen is now paid parking. It's boxed, and if they want to bring that map up against... You can see how it is boxed, and there's a portion of it. I'm not saying there's no free parking. I'm just saying there's a portion of it. But if you wanted to swap the two, I think it would make a lot more sense. I don't want my wife parking in the parking structure to get the free parking and dragging two small children across four streets with tons of traffic. It's concerning to me. I mean, my wife is an extremely responsible person, but I have a little boy who's three years old who's wriggling around, trying to get loose, you know? He's needing to learn, you know, how to walk down a public street and how to be safe around cars. And I don't really want him having to cross four streets to utilize free parking. I've gotten free parking on Front Street maybe once or twice, you know, in years. Most of the time that's full. I understand that. I think the major outcry that you're getting is from the moms that want to bring their kids there during the week. It's Monday through Friday people who want to come after work. It's not the weekend crowd that packs the place out. It's the people that want to come on a regular basis in the off-peak times. And so that's why I would just... I would ask you guys to reconsider and maybe swap the free parking back to McEwen. And I'm already hearing concerns from the city that the parking structure's not paying for itself. And that's concerning, because how long is that free parking going to stay if the $1 for the third hour is not benefiting the city the way that they anticipated? How long will that parking be free for?
Yeah, that's not... That's not going to happen. We're keeping that. We just opened it, so it's got a... A garage like that has to go a few years before any changes are made. So at least from my opinion, anyway, it's going to stay that way for quite some time.
Councilman Gookin, you know, clearly said, you know, you guys can't make promises for the future. So saying it's not going to go to a paid parking structure, you know...
The only thing I can promise is what I would do, right?
Gotcha. Absolutely. And I appreciate that. But I mean, there's no promises for the future, and people brought up a slippery slope, and it's... The concern is it's $1 today per hour for McEwen. When is it $2? When is it $3? When does it continue to go up by the justification of, well, it's just a little bit more. It's just a little bit more. And I think for a lot of people, I think it's very obvious, that people don't spend their evening here away from their families because they're not, you know, because they're not impacted. It's a real issue. Whether you guys feel like it's a real issue, it feels like a real issue to a lot of people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Come on up.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Chantel Daly. I live on 3519 North 21st Place in Coeur d'Alene. I get the view of Canfield. I'm a transplant from California.
What was that again?
California. I had visited here many, many times, and this place is a living dream. It really is. And it's not just about the beauty. It's not just about the local government, where I get opportunity to be here and actually make a difference, which is something that I had never been able to experience in the big city. But it was the way the locals are and the way that the people are that have been here forever, and the way that they look you in the eye, and they really want to know about your day. I mean, it's just so touching. It's beyond anything that I could ever experience. Like I said, it's a living dream. Coming here with my kids, going to the beautiful lake, not having to pay. It was like, oh, so exciting for me, because you know where I'm from. You know, you just pay for everything. And everybody's used to that when they come here from a different big city. They're used to just paying and paying, you know? I'll pay $35 for the parking garage. You said that it's all full. People are paying for their parking passes, because they're doing it. They're doing it. They're doing it. A lot of businesses are here, and people don't want to fuss with the parking. They just want to pay the $35, especially if you're a business owner down here, where it's growing in technology and it's growing so much. But I want to get to the heart of what I'm trying to say, which is, what a lot of locals here have said was that they're feeling a disconnect. When you go down there and you all of a sudden see that you have to now pay for parking, and the sign that's presenting it is spelling Coeur d'Alene wrong, that's upsetting to... I'm not even a local, but I'm a resident here. I take pride in this place. And it was upsetting to me. It made me feel, like I can't imagine how a local would feel. It made me feel like, what? Who is doing that? What? We not know? You know, like... And I'm sure that there's a reason for it, and it's all fine, you know? Like, on the other level, I know that progress is difficult. Progress is hard. This place is progressing, and nobody likes change like that. But I think that locals really would love the opportunity to just feel a little bit more in control of that progress. And of course, there's going to be the people digging their heels in and not wanting any ounce of change. But it's that... That's what it is, you know? It's like, that'd be great if we could roll back the parking so we can feel again that we have some type of control over that progress, because that is the fear. Because everybody wants to come here from other places that don't mind paying $500,000 for a house, or don't mind paying $5 for parking. But that's losing the heart of what this place is, you know? When we... And it's only for those four months a year, you know, but it's still... There's just something that's getting lost in the progress. And I think that there could be a connection point from the government to the locals, and I don't know what that is. So anyway, keep Coeur d'Alene the living dream. It's beautiful here. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
I just have a quick clarification. I think you...
You'd have to...
I already talked, I had my turn, but I think there's going to be an issue after this meeting, is that you keep mentioning two-hour free parking at the library. I don't think it's okay for us to go to the library and park for two hours and take our kids to the park. Is that correct?
No, that's not...
Yeah, so that might be something just to clarify.
What I'm saying is that this parking down here is available to be used. That parking there during library hours is for library patrons.
Right. And it's free for two hours, only for the library?
For library folks, right. Down here, it's free for anyone.
Okay.
Kiki.
Just on the fact... On the fact list again, I wanted to clarify that my contact with Diamond Parking on the misspelling of Coeur d'Alene on that sign was corrected within six hours of it being discovered. It was a human error, and they were mortified by their vendor who did that. But I also wanted to share that in that conversation, we used to have a street department. I think it was a street department guy that used to be here, and he collected all of the printed misspellings of Coeur d'Alene throughout... Is that right? A true story, Troy? And he had hundreds of signs, company signs, and all of that. So I get that it was hurtful. It would be hurtful to anybody who's feeling this stress of growth or a parking issue. But I did want to let you know that it was corrected immediately. It was a human error, and I still backspace regularly and mess up my COEUR. So I'm sure Diamond felt... Well, their vendor was on the hook, but they apologized profusely to the city about that.
All right, thank you. Dan?
Well, one other thing I meant to mention, and actually, it's probably good I waited a minute because it's come up again. I guess for me, just acknowledge that, you know, there's the specific parking issue and the money, but I think a lot of what's being expressed is something, you know, much bigger than that. I mean, it's the effects of growth. And it's... You know, I drive down the exact same streets you do. I get hung up at the same stoplights. And, you know, if I go to do a refi of my house, I'm kind of happy, wow, that value is up there. But when I get my tax bill, just like you, I'm not so wild and at a point. Again, being born and raised here, I appreciate there's a price point that people truly can kind of get priced out, especially for our younger kids and seniors on fixed income. So I mean, that is a huge anxiety. And I guess I would just say, you know, and there's some of that that we can, you know, we can deal with and control, and we can talk about parking rates and some of that. But as far as what the prices of property in Coeur d'Alene, we can't control that. Who's going to get to move here, you know, short of something draconian? You know, we can't do that. So... But I guess I would just acknowledge that there is a lot of general anxiety about the growth, and I'm sure all of us feel it. I certainly do, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to come up? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Christina Villagomez, and I live at 1117 East Sherman. I didn't expect to speak tonight, so thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I just had a question I'd like to clarify. With the new parking structure on Coeur d'Alene, is that owned by the city or privately?
City.
And just to clarify, since there was some confusion in the past about charging for the parking at McEwen, is there any intention in the future to charge for that structure downtown?
To charge for which structure now? The new garage?
Yeah.
The new garage is priced at, the first two hours are free, and then it's a dollar an hour for any hours after that.
And there's no plan in the future to change that two-hour free parking?
There's not any... There's not any plans right now to change it, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was on the record. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
But again, to clarify, that doesn't mean forever. So...
Not a promise.
That's not... Is a future parking commission and a future council could make a different decision.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear on the intention of the council as of this time.
As of this time?
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give comments tonight? Come on up.
Hello, thank you.
Hi there.
My name's Haley. I live at 2454 West Fairway Drive in Coeur d'Alene. I guess I just kind of wanted a little bit of clarification.
Sorry, Haley, I didn't catch your last name?
Bergman, sorry. There's a mention here in the FAQ regarding Cootney County plates. I know a few people have suggested that or mentioned it. There's also, I know it's a state thing, but state stickers that you get at the DMV for state parks. It's $10 for the year, and normally at any state park, it's $5 to park per day. I don't know if that's something that the committee has looked at or could potentially look at for the residents here in Cootney County. I know that it probably wouldn't be a DMV thing, because that's state, right? But something that we could look into for residents here to pay a flat fee, to have a sticker on their car for the two hours that we used to have. And it says something here about, like, license plate recognition. It's a little confusing. Sorry. But we'd still register, you know, and like they do for... On the app, we'd have our license plate. If we were over two hours, you'd still get your ticket, but we'd still have our two-hour parking that we had previously and pay a flat fee that could still go back to parks, just like it does for state parks.
That's something that could be done. It's involving... So you would have to come, and you'd have to have a proof of residence where you live. You bring a utility bill. I've seen it other places. You pay a fee, you prove your residency, they give you a sticker.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I've seen it in other places, certainly something that we could take a look at.
Is that anything that anyone here would want to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's something that they could potentially look into?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Widmire and members of the city council. My name is Dan Geiger, 715 West Second Avenue, Spokane. I'm here tonight representing Diamond Parking. I see I have a lot of fans out here, and I guarantee you there will be no applause. Anyway, I just wanted to say a couple things. As a person that has worked with the city at Coeur d'Alene for about 30 years, and I've been in the parking business about 40 years, you guys do an excellent job in terms of how you run your city. And I say that based upon the other cities that I've seen parking operations in. So even though things aren't perfect, like you alluded to earlier, this city does an excellent job of managing their parking resources. And I don't think everyone always realizes that. I'm not here to speak whether or not it should be free. That's up to you folks. We at Diamond Parking are a parking company, and we've been in the business about 97 years. It is a Seattle-based company. I can't help that. The owners founded it there in 1922, and they still live there. But we operate in about 40 cities throughout the western US. So we've... We work with municipalities like you folks. So we've had a chance to see how other cities operate, and this one runs very well, at least on how they manage their parking resources. The other thing I wanted to mention, the contract is public record. And I want to make something extremely clear. We do not get an incentive for writing tickets. In fact, by design, it's a neutral thing. We're paid to write the tickets, but we do not get a bonus for writing them. We just simply write the tickets because they're an enforcement tool, and that's how we manage the parking. So I want to make that clear. And the other thing, I do love your city. I don't live here, and I don't have to deal with the growth, so I can understand that's upsetting to some people. But the... Some of you said you don't feel you're welcome, and I think you... Councilmember Miller, you asked about that. Now, our experience is, out of the thousands of people who park in that lot each month, most of them feel welcome. There's more people that feel welcome than don't feel welcome. I think the folks who don't feel welcome are the folks that don't want to pay. And again, I can understand that if it's been... It has been two hours free for many years, so that is upsetting to the local people. But if you did an informal survey, you would find most people that park there are happy to pay, and they're not mistreated. And we do know how to spell Coeur d'Alene. We got that fixed. Let's see. Oh, and then the other thing, our company comes to the Parking Commission meetings each month, and the Parking Commission has gone out of its way to make sure, along with the council, that there is two hours free parking. It's all over the streets. It's in the city hall lot, and then it's in the new garage. So it is there. It's not as convenient as it once was perhaps, but they're still two hours free, and you've gone to great lengths to keep that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at all wishing to come up?
I did.
You'd already come up?
I did.
Yeah, come on up.
Closing summary, okay.
Just to clarify, the gentleman from Diamond Parking said there's no compensation to Diamond Parking for writing tickets. No commission-based or bonus or anything like that. Could the city clarify, according to the Diamond contract, what their compensation is for issuing infractions?
You know, that's something, Keith. Troy can get... Do you have it right there, Troy?
It's a dollar.
I have a copy.
I believe it's a dollar.
It's a dollar. The ticket is paid under 14 days, and 35% of the amount of it is paid after 14 days. That's Diamond Parking's compensation for issuing tickets to citizens or people in the area violating parking. or people in the area violating parking.
Troy, do you have the language right there?
Some equal to $1.00 of each parking violation.
Microphone.
Uh, thank you. A sum equal to $1.00 of each parking violation charged received by the parking administrator within the first 14 days after issuance. And for parking violations, charges collected after the first 14 days from issuance, the parking administrator shall be entitled to a sum equal to 35% of charges.
And Troy, why does it go up after 14 days? Why does it increase?
Because the mailings would've increased at that point in time. There's been more work done to work the collection.
Okay.
Okay.
Shelley Porsche, 460 Sammy Court, Coeur d'Alene. So, do y'all have to pay to park? Like the city council people?
Oh, yeah. I've gotten tickets.
Really?
Oh, yeah, you bet.
Do they send you to collections?
No, 'cause I pay them.
Not if you pay them, yeah.
Quickly. We pay them very quickly.
I, I do, actually, I, I come down here and complain and pay them. That's what I do.
How fair is that, to send a parking ticket to Chapman Financial, who is all over a lot of people in town, and then put it on their credit record? Because if you don't pay the $15 or whatever, then it's gonna go on your record. Is that nice of Coeur d'Alene? You don't, you guys aren't gonna, you said it, you get nothing if the ticket isn't paid, but you turn it over to collections. That's not nice.
Just, just like anything that would be owed to the, the city, it's, it's a rule.
But you get nothing.
It's a rule.
Chapman Financial gets any money.
No.
That's what he said.
No, no, the, the...
What he said?
They, they, if it goes all the way to collection, there's a fee that Chapman adds on to it. The city gets the balance.
Yeah. I'm familiar. No, he said they get nothing. Did you not? I wrote it down when he said it.
I'd say that the city did not get anything when it went to collections.
Diamond doesn't get anything.
Diamond doesn't get anything.
Yeah, diamond.
If it's not collected, when it is being processed.
Well, I'll re-watch the show. And, uh, what happens to the revenue that y'all charge for the Live After Five in McEwen Park?
That, that revenue is, is private. The, the gentleman that runs Live After Five, he rents that space from the city, and that, that rental fee goes into the parks, is it Parks Capital? Troy, the rental from?
It's probably General Parks.
General Parks, yeah. General Parks. So, the, so he, we rent that to a private individual that runs Live After Five.
Um, did y'all pass that thing that says that you can move the White House over here?
Working on that.
What happens if it goes over here to the free parking over here? I mean, where's it really gonna go?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a discussion.
Then that'll be gone, too. And the elderly people, my mom is one of them, comes downtown. She used to live down here, and then she moved to Hayden, but they don't come down here anymore, because all the parking lots, you have to use your phone. Most elderly people don't know how to use those things, you know? Their smartphones, you know? I'm 56, and I don't even know how to do them all. But, you know, it's like, okay, so I have to put, download this app on my phone. I only have 16 gigabytes or whatever, and, you know, it, oh, then your Wi-Fi has to work, [laughing], which we all know that's a joke around here. So, you know, that's not convenient at all. It was convenient when you could put your money in those little slots. That was convenient. But then somebody has to be there, huh? And the thing at the resort where you go in and there's a person there, like we used to have. And then after hours, there's nobody there, but there's still a little machine that counts your free hours or whatever. And people could do validation, like the resort does. That's an option also for people shopping or eating. That's what they do in big cities. Been there, too. And, um, in your paper here, that says, uh, parking fund contributions to parks, there's only one park put here, and that's Ramsey. And that's $75,000 for irrigation.
Well, there, there's all the equipment that is used in all, in a lot of the parks.
Do you buy new trucks every year?
No, not every year.
$70,000 for pickups. Hmm. Anyway, something to think about.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to give comments tonight?
Michelle Dudley, 4832 Orchid Lane, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Thank you all for letting us come and speak, and, uh, most of everything, my concerns have already been addressed, but I just wanted to thank you, Kiki. Uh, we've interacted on Facebook with the thread. I appreciate you putting the facts out there. Uh, I just wanna say, with this parking, how long before Riverstone starts to charge for parking? I mean, that's a great park down there. Now, with all of the development that's going in, I just feel like this is just gonna lead to one thing, and another, and another. Two-hour parking, many people, the locals, we just go for a short time. Either take kids, go grab something to eat, you know, go look at the lake, take a walk around the park, look at the police memorial, which is, it's a fabulous park. I mean, there's no doubt about that. But we have to start thinking about, do we wanna be the next Spokane? Where everywhere you go, you're paying inflated rates. I, I just hope that's not the direction that we're going. So, thank you, and, um, please consider the public's opinion tonight.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment tonight? I, I just wanted to thank everyone for taking well over two hours to get here and to comment. Uh, Renata has all of the comments in the record. Uh, from here, uh, we will take all of those comments. It will be passed on to the parking commission, and it'll work its way through the process. In the meantime, please communicate with the city for anyone that didn't get a chance to speak tonight, but you still want to communicate your, uh, thoughts, uh, email
I wondered who that was gonna be.
But anyway, thank, thank everyone for coming tonight, a- and, uh, and it's something that we'll, we'll work on. Uh, again, parking is not perfect, but it doesn't mean that we can't try. So, thank you all for being here tonight. Yeah, and we will, uh, we're gonna take just a five, maybe a seven-minute recess, and then we'll get back at it.
Okay, we are back and we're into our presentation. We're not even off the first page yet, but we'll get there. And so, we're gonna have a health corridor update and we have Ben from T.O. Engineers that's gonna enlighten us.
Ben, who figured he'd be out of here by what, 6:22?
I thought I was first on the agenda, right? Mayor Council, thank you for your time. As the mayor said, I've been away with T.O. Engineers here in town representing our consultant team on the health corridor. Go through a lot of this relatively quickly, but if you do have any questions or anything, please don't hesitate to let me know. Somehow, I'm not getting to fullscreen here. There we go. So first of all, you all know the health corridor, but as a quick reminder, where we're at in the process and why I'm here tonight, we finished community engagement and survey summary, or at least we're substantially through that process. It will, of course, be ongoing. I want to update you on everything that's happening there. And of course, the design shred was last week as well. So first of all, the study area, for everybody's reference, I think you all know it, so I won't slow down to review it much, other than to say it hasn't changed. Community engagement, we did a lot of work on community engagement over the last month and I wanted to bring you up to speed on that. I won't go through them in detail, but here's 10 individual touches. Some of them were multiple times, but anyway, there were 10 individual events, if you will, plus all the coverage that the newspaper provided. And we also finished our survey, and this is a summary of the key results from the online survey. Again, I won't go through them all, but I will point out the top five in blue there are all related to transportation and mobility. You'll be pleased to hear that the availability of parking is number three.
Free parking?
He doesn't say that.
Up to you. To back up a few steps, a month ago, we did the visioning. That's when I was here last. That was June 13th and 14th. We took all of those comments, used those as a lead-in to the design shred. During the design shred, a couple of us were also out doing some door-to-door work and some pop-up meetings. We did one at Cootney Health, just to try and get people to do the survey and to know what's going on and to come and participate. And come they did. So we got going on the design shred last Monday night. We had, I think, 20-some people the first day, and by the end of it, I think we had 35 that were attending. It actually went up as it went along, which was great. The way it was organized is during the day, the design team would come up with their ideas and their concepts, and then in the evenings, there'd be a public presentation. We would gather all the public input. People would put a green dot on what they liked and a red dot on what they wouldn't like, and that would all be incorporated the next day. So the first day, we had four different concepts. We did some of these, you did senior council package, just because the file size was getting way too large. So the first day, four concepts were pulled together and put up for public comment. That was all gathered. Tuesday, the designers took that and came back with two concepts, with all the best ideas, if you will. Again, that went through the public comment loop on Tuesday night, and then, I'll get to showing you the grand finale here in a second, but Wednesday night, we came forward with the final draft plan for everybody's consideration. I'm gonna walk you through a few of the main key ideas and concepts that we generated as part of that master plan, so you can help understand it once you do see it. This slide is just simply highlighting all the existing street when it works in gray. That was obviously part of our immediate central focus. The other thing we heard loud and clear was neighborhood stability and preserving the existing residential areas out there, which are highlighted here. That certainly is a key goal that's being incorporated into the current planning efforts. The next one was looking at doing some big moves with transportation connectivity. It's lacking. There were three major ideas that came out of it. The first, isn't a new idea, but let's get another north-south connection and a bridge over the freeway, just to let people have another way in and out, instead of being congested on Ironwood at Northwest, on Ironwood at 95, and then again at Lakewood Northwest. But you got, frankly, a job center as big as the hospital, plus all the patrons coming and going. That's not very many places to put them and funnel them all through.
Ben, I have a question.
Yes, Dan.
Is that exit, the one in purple or pink, whatever color that is?
Yeah, thank you for slowing me down and backing me up a second. I skipped the other big idea, and that was, and probably one of the bigger ones, actually, was working with ITD and local transportation agencies to see if we can get right-in, right-out turns off of 95 between...
Okay, so it's just right-in, right-out?
What's that?
That's just right-in, right-out. That's not an intersection?
Correct. Would just be right-in, right-out. There are some congestion, you know, there's gonna be some concerns with these, so we're engaging the traffic people to talk about them, but one of the key things that came out was, let's try and keep the traffic from getting here to Ironwood and congesting that intersection further. And we could do that by giving the traffic the opportunity to come in and just free-flow back in. And it's the same with the east side of the freeway. There's really no access into this back upper area here, much so to give them a right turn-in to come in there. That would have to be well-thought-out and done carefully to make sure that, you know, helps the problem, instead of making it worse. And thank you for clarifying that. I had the three big moves and I skipped the one.
Just wanted to make sure that it was allowed, because I thought the limits on ingress or egress from a freeway had to be a certain distance.
Yeah. They have standards for that. It all is going to tie into the interchange study that ITD just finished right here and how it works. They're going to be the approving jurisdiction.
All right.
And we're just starting those conversations to see which direction we could go with it, Councilman.
Okeydoke. Thank you.
The other big one, to continue with the transportation items, straightening out Ironwood. You know, the infamous S-curve is here. There were a lot of different ways looked at what could be done with it. Where it landed is looking at just simply trying to straighten out the S-curve a little bit and see how that looks. The other big key thing that emerged is there were really two areas that the public and the design team thought was a candidate for more development. The primary one is probably on the east side of 95 here. That area is pretty big and empty when you stop and look at it and think about it. The other area is, of course, around the Cootney Health Core, more primarily. The area is back off to the west of that, where you just see a lot of underutilized properties. And here is the draft final plan that we came up with. This is obviously still on trace paper from the design team doing their thing during the day the whole time. And you can see most of those major elements. You've got the overpass, you've got the right-in, right-outs. The other one we talked about, again, that I failed to mention, was getting Ironwood connected out to where you can get to Forest. You've gotta know the route to the freeway. Yes, Councilman?
14 years ago, we tried to push Ironwood through with the church. I just revamped that story, and the church is expanding right now, and that spot is kinda gone, and they didn't want to give up there. So, I love that everybody saw that, but I don't see how it's gonna work if it's not included in the urban renewal district to where there's some economics to make it work.
So you brought up two points that I would like to address. The first, and maybe take a step back, is this is the results of a three-day workshop. So now, we're going in to hit the master planning hard, and we'll be back at the end of August. So there's lots of little details, like what you just mentioned, that need to be uncovered and thought-through a little better. So we're in the process of doing that, and that's a true statement for the whole master plan that you see here. There's, for us, the real work begins now, although the shred was no small left. But now, we're getting into the weeds and starting to find those details and work with whoever we need to work with to talk them through and get it narrowed down a little bit. There's still gonna be some unknowns and some things that aren't fleshed out. You know, right now, the talk is for a 20-year plan. It'll change. It'll evolve and change as it goes. And that's a good point. It's outside the renewal district. The question briefly came up, should it be changed or expanded? The answer was no. If that's truly worth pursuing and it makes sense, then it's something that maybe the city would look at by funding by some other means. And of all the moves up here, provided the land's available, which is a really big if, it's probably the cheapest in terms of transportation moves, other than, you know, the effects on third and fourth and the need for signals. I would probably change that equation pretty quick. When we straightened Ironwood out and looked at it, it's really only from here to here that you're talking new road. The rest of it's existing. There'd be a lot of work done to get that through there, but what it does is allows you to open up a street network that gets you a lot more connections in and out. That tied in with the overpass and the idea of continuing Cootney Health's Loop Road that they've got, that kinda dead ends out right here, and just wrap that all the way around, so that there's another circulation route through the area, again, to take the traffic off of Ironwood. And again, it would naturally feed into the freeway overpass as well. You know, this is 20-some feet up in there, and then the land falls this way, so you're talking about roadways that are elevated in the neighborhood of 30 feet through here, which turns into a fun thing to try and do, you know, a welcome to Coeur d'Alene sign or some sort of other landmark. But, you know, again, it's a very significant investment.
I'm gonna hop ahead a little bit, but there's a reference on the last slide to a parking structure. Where's the parking structure?
It is right here. If I had PowerPoint skills, it'd let me put a flashing red dot on it. I would've done it.
It's supposed to be a P.
But yeah, we've, the talk of a parking structure is here, just because the biggest need for the parking structure is flowing in and out of Cootney Health. They have some very conceptual preliminary plans for additional expansion in this direction, and then, when you get into more development potential through this area, it could also be there to serve that area.
Is there any, any plan for connectivity regarding non-personal cars? I mean, is there gonna be any type of a public transportation that's gonna be available in here, like a shuttle for people to get around? Have they talked about that?
I don't think like a corridor-specific shuttle's been talked about, but we are working with the transit, their exact formal name escapes me, but the local transit agency to map their routes and then work with them on what they would like to see for their routes. They definitely have routes that are geared toward the hospital to help people who need services get in and out of there.
Okay.
And of course, they have, you know, special needs on where they need picked up and dropped off as well. So they are definitely being included in the loop as well. They've done a, the county's done a nice job on engaging on that front.
And that's one of the, when this area is growing, and it is growing, and there's more services necessary, and we heard from people earlier today who have trouble getting around. And so, a lot of what my concern is for this is if you have this medical campus, this health corridor, then is there not part of the process, thinking about how are we gonna get people around? So they go to the parking garage, or they find a place to park, but they need to go here and there. Just wanted to see if that was part of the big picture.
Yes, it certainly is. So there's that. The other two sides of that, although it doesn't directly address those needs, but the people who like to bike and walk, the discussion's always there to improve the trail network and improve the bike ability of it, so people have another way than just going in their car. There were a few people tonight who spoke up along those lines. Probably the minority, in all fairness, but multimodal transportation is the planning term for it. So I would be looking at the bikes, looking at the pedestrian paths, which the thought on Ironwood through here would be to have good bike lanes on both sides of it. Obviously, in the winter, it's also the snow storage area. And then, there's a natural greenway here already that comes down through here, essentially, that would tie into the trail Cootney Health already has built, so you'd have an outer walking loop. And then, we're getting awful close. The Centennial Trail or Spurs off of it, at least, exists right in this area. So we're getting awful close to being able to connect into the regional trails for people who are wanting to bike or whatnot. And then, all the, all the streets through here would be, you know, set up for the on-street parking is where the discussion's at right now.
Well, let's make sure we do bike lanes, and I know you're probably talking to experts on that. You know, there's different classes of bike lanes.
Right.
And the worst one is the white stripe that just goes right down the gutter.
Yeah.
So I think our biking community would appreciate some nice class, whatever they are, the top class.
Certainly. I don't have the rendering with me today, but there was a rendering that was part of this and with it, that was a cycle track, is what it's called. So it's got the wide, separate bike lane. It's got the two white lines that separate it from traffic.
Okay, good.
Any other questions on this one?
I do. I have one.
Yes.
Can you go back to that one where you're straightening out the curve? And I love that idea. I was kinda trying to look at all the buildings that will be changed. Are you being able to bypass that giant gym?
So the final layout here...
I'm looking at the buildings that have to go away.
I gotta get my bearings for a second. Bear with me. So this particular rendering, you're right, Peak Athletic Club would be right there. Not exactly ideal area for an athletic club, but it comes back to what I was telling you before. Now, we're taking a deeper dive. We'll start looking for those little opportunities to do things like miss buildings or preserve existing streets and take advantage of what's already there.
So there's a little flex left until you can figure out the actual pathway?
Exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, good question.
Any other questions for Ben this time?
At the end.
I don't think I've got any more slides, other than to tell you where we're at in the process. The blue box is us on the master planning effort. That's a view of the whole process. A little more than halfway through it. You'll see us back in August with, I believe, a 90% draft to talk more seriously about a lot of specifics on it.
Okay. Woody?
I have one more question. So, this is all cool. I'm still not sure how you, how it, how it happens, how there's things already there, and how does that go away, and who pays for it and all that. My question is, is there a model for something like this? Is there a health corridor out there somewhere where they kinda created this thing that you guys are trying to create?
So interestingly enough, I don't have specific knowledge of those myself, but the other people on the design team who do this for a living are aware of it, and health corridor is not a term that's unique to Coeur d'Alene. There's multiple pursuits of this across the country, really, with Mayo Clinic in Rochester being lifted up as the goal, or the big shiny, shiny hospital on the hill, if you will, and how it works and functions with the community. So we're not the only people who see this as a growing need and something that they wanna use to continue to enhance their communities.
Thanks.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Ben, at what point are we gonna get some financial information? Because you've got a plan that has a bridge in it, and you've got a plan that, I mean, if you're gonna be straightening Ironwood, there's some property that's gonna need to be purchased some right away.
Yep.
So are we gonna receive some financial projections for all this?
Yeah. So, to fill you in a little bit more on that, the economic feasibility side's well underway. All the background existing is basically built, so the two paths are coming together. The economic feasibility and the concept now are coming together, and those need turned into a joint implementation plan, because bringing you a plan that's not fundable is of no use. So building it together, and that process is happening, and that's part of the 90% draft I was talking about.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Next, we have Chief White is going to talk to us about a police victim video.
Victims of the police or people who are just victims?
It's actually a video for our Victim Services Unit. Jeff Crowe and Andy Finney worked with our, whoops, I'm sorry, I gotta stop this, worked with members of our Victim Services Unit and other members of the Police Department to put this together, largely as a PSA. It's about a two-minute video, and so I'll just begin by showing that, if that's okay.
The Coeur d'Alene Victim Services Unit is committed to reducing the trauma victims and witnesses experience following domestic violence, stalking, sexual assaults, and sexual abuse of children. In the aftermath of a crime, victims often struggle with the physical, emotional, and financial impact of victimization, and need information and assistance to help them cope. We seek to make the criminal justice system more understandable, accessible, and responsive to the concerns of victims and their families. We work hard to ensure crime victims and their family members are provided the services and information necessary, so they can be an integral part of the criminal case process. This helps to ensure victims are treated fairly and their voices are heard. We assist with on-scene crisis intervention, safety planning, support during the investigation, and court assistance. In addition, we provide personal advocacy, case status updates, along with community education and referrals to outside resources, including safe passage. The Coeur d'Alene Police Department is dedicated to raising community awareness of these under-reported crimes. Victims of domestic violence and sexual assault need to know important and valuable immediate support and advocacy is available, both at our department and within our community. For more information, email victimservices@cdaid.org. If you are the victim of a crime and this is an emergency, please call 911.
We brought our victim advocate on board about nine months ago, and since that time, our victim advocate has provided services to 477 different services for victims in the city of Coeur d'Alene in that time. These are services that would not have otherwise been available to those individuals, at least at the same time that they were provided by our victim advocate. We just wanted to real briefly just thank the mayor and council for your support of this program and bringing it together. As you recall, we brought forward a request for a grant late last year for a victim advocate, and that grant is up for renewal again here. I think we should find out this week, the dollar amount that goes along with that program for continuing funding, and it's been a very successful program. But without, Dan, for questions about the program.
Woody?
Chief, I caught this video one night, or it's running, or I saw it somewhere, and I was truly moved. I came running in here to talk to Jeff. I go, "Where did this come from?" And they said, "They made it with York." And it's, I've never seen anything quite like that in a PSA. It touched my heart and made me much more aware of the problems that are out there that I guess I don't wanna hear about, don't wanna think about. And thank you, guys. It's really well done, and just a different approach from what these guys have done in the past. So you guys must've poked them pretty good, you know?
No, I think the creativity was all theirs. They really did a great job there. We're actually looking to make a shorter version of it. A two-minute PSA is a bit long for some of the networks here locally, and so we're trying to determine if we were to make a 30-second or a one-minute version, would they run it? And we're still waiting to hear back from some of our local networks to see if they would run it as a PSA for us.
Really well done. Thank you.
It is. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you. Important stuff. Thank you, important stuff. All right, we will, we're onto the second page now. We've made it. Announcements, any member, Kiki, you have an announcement?
I don't know I had one. I think I forgot what it was. No, it's the Atlas Waterfront Developer Open House is tomorrow here at the Library Community Room, and it's at Hillary, 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock till 3 o'clock. So I just wanted to make sure any developers who are still tuned in, they're invited to be there.
Any other council announcements? I have a couple of things. Appointment of Christie Wood, Jim Lean, and Mike McDowell to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and Iris Sigler to the Childcare Commission.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution 19026.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. We are now on to other business. Resolution number 19-027, setting a preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020, and scheduling a public hearing for September 3, 2019. Vani?
Good evening, Mayor Woodmire and City Council members. Tonight, we are asking for approval of Resolution 19-027, which sets the high watermark for the 2019-20 City of Coeur d'Alene budget, and sets the public hearing for September 3 at 6 o'clock. The final budget, which will be approved on September 3, can be a lower amount than the resolution you are being asked to approve tonight, but cannot be higher. The preliminary budget can be found on the city's website, on the Finance Department's page. I would encourage all interested citizens to review it, and please contact me if they have any questions. There have been two additions to the resolution that were not included in the preliminary budget, both of which are in the Police Department. Just want to make a note of those. One is for radios and the amount of $53,000, and the other is for vehicles and the amount of $258,000. Please feel free to stop me and ask any questions that you might have during this presentation. I have a quick overview of what is included in the preliminary budget, but this first slide shows what has not been included. This slide details $745,000. That was cut from the original, original budget submitted from the city's various departments. Included in these cuts were four and a half new positions and the project coordinator position that is funded in the current financial plan but has not been filled. Other cuts include some training dollars and capital expenses. The significant changes to revenue in this financial plan include property taxes from new growth, taxes that can be generated by increasing the current year tax budget by 3%, revenues that come from the state, transfers in from other funds, interest, and an increase in the uses of the fund balance to pay for one-time expenses. The state revenues include sales tax, highway users fees, and liquor tax. The state projects these numbers for Idaho cities, and this budget includes those state projections. The increase from the fiscal year 2018-19 budget is 6%, which equates to a $477,000 increase. Franchise fee revenue, which includes cable, electric, and gas franchise, franchise fees, have not been increased significantly year over year. The franchise fees collected in the first two quarters compared to last year are $61,000 lower. Checked with Avista to see what is causing this decrease, and they listed several factors. One of which is that natural gas prices have been dropping consistently over recent years. Another is that mandated energy efficiency programs have reduced the amount of natural gas and electricity consumed.
Oh, we need to put a stop to that.
Building permits this fiscal year have also dropped. They are $329,000 below the same time last year. The preliminary budget includes a 1% increase to franchise fees and less than a half a percent increase to budget, or to building permit revenues. The city recently had an indirect allocation study done, which concluded that the city's enterprise funds should be contributing additional $216,000 to the general fund for services rendered. This increase was offset by a decrease in annexation fees transferred to the general fund of $187,000. The county sent out the final new growth number yesterday, so that's official. The difference between the preliminary new growth number and the final number was less than $1,700 in tax revenue to the city. So they were very close with their preliminary guess. This slide shows a historical look at the taxes generated to the city in new growth dollars. The preliminary budget includes the prior year's tax budget of $21,800,000, plus a 3% increase to that, to that tax budget, which amounts to $655,000. The estimate made a new growth number of $402,000, and the amount needed to pay the debt owing on the 215 general obligation bonds for a total of $23,700,000. I want to point out that when the city asks for a 3% increase, the increase is 3% of the amount asked for the year before, so it's 3% of the 21.8 million. It is not a 3% increase to each individual's tax bill. This amount to $655,000, which is, so the amount of the 3% is the $65,000, which is spread over the entire city's taxable valuation of $5 billion. This year, $250,000 was added to the budget for prior year collections. This amount is not part of the amount that will be levied. In the past, we have not included a dollar amount for prior year taxes collected in the current year. The thought behind that, thought behind not including it was that there would be some of the current levy not collected this year, and it would offset the prior. Looking back at prior years, though, we have consistently receded all of the current year's taxes and an average of $250,000 in prior year taxes. In order to balance this budget without going into fund balance for ongoing expenses, we've included these revenues in the budget. Here's a look at the last few years and the amounts taken of the 3% that is allowed. In the last nine years, the city could have taken 27% in increases. If the council decides to take 3% this budget cycle, they will have limited those allowable increases to 7.5%. Fund balance. The city's fund balance at 930, 2018 was $9.8 million. This was an increase of $1.4 million from the prior years, which puts the 930 fund balance at 24% of the 2018-19 budgeted expenses. This increase was partly due to open positions in several of the general department, general fund departments in fiscal year 1819, and revenues coming in higher than projected. The projected fund balance for 930, 2019 is $8.3 million, which would be 19.56% of budgeted expenses. This projected decrease is due to the current budget slated to use $607,000 of fund balance, estimated budget amendments of $820,000 in this fiscal year, which includes $300,000 for the purchase of property on East Sherman, interest due to wastewater for the purchase of the Atlas Waterfront, unexpected repairs and maintenance, and retirement payouts. Projecting the fund balance out to September 30 of 2020 would see a decrease of 1.6 for the movements of funds to the proposed health insurance trust, plus an additional decrease of $1 million in one-time purchases that is proposed in this preliminary plan. This could potentially bring the fund balance down to 5.7 by September 30 of 2020. This would put the fund balance at 13.5% of budgeted expenses. The GFOA recommends a year-end balance of at least two months of expenses, which would equate to approximately $7 million. If revenues and expenses this current year and the year that this budget encompasses come in as budgeted, this could be the movement that we see. If revenues come in higher and or expenses lower, the drop in fund balance would be less.
So, question for you, Vani. They have the, on this chart, it has the 1819 budgeted use of fund balance. Why is that on this chart as opposed to, well, it's this year's amount, but why is it on here for next year's amount? Or is it just a cumulative total?
Well, I was showing the movement over the course of the current year that we're in and the next, the year that we're looking to budget for.
And then, and then we're projecting for 2020.
Right. So this projection is for the end of 2020. The projection for the end of 2019 is $8.3 million.
Cool, thank you.
And does that 13, about 0.5% include the potential extra for the police cars and equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
This next slide shows the history of the general fund's unassigned fund balance for the last two years, just so you can see the movement that happens through there. The increase to contracted wages and benefits in the general fund amounts to $1.4 million. This increase does not include any new positions. This is the amount needed to fund the current contracts with the employee associations. Comparing this to the available increase in property taxes provides a deficit of $378,000. One-time purchases that are included in the preliminary budget that are suggested to be paid for from fund balance totaled just over $1 million. These items include the comprehensive plan, repairs and upgrades to the street department, fire stations and police department buildings, radios, vehicles, and upgraded technology in the police department, and some other capital items in streets, recreation, and the building department. Changes to personnel that are included in this preliminary budget include the project coordinator position and admin being removed. The CDBG position has grown from a half-time position to a three-quarter position, which is completely paid for with grant funds. A half-time city attorney position has been moved to a full-time position. One additional SRO officer, partially paid for by the school district, has been added, an additional park maintenance worker, and a collection operator in wastewater, plus a little bit of movement into part-time for a total of 2.74 additional FTEs, full-time equivalents.
Okay, so the project coordinator on this page is listed as 98,878, but on the second page is listed as 103,172.
Well, that's probably because I, at one point, was looking at it with the, without the two and a half percent increase that happens 1st of October, and...
Oh.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Great, thanks.
The preliminary estimated valuation for the city is a $681 million increase over the last valuation. Using that valuation and the proposed preliminary budget, which includes a 3% increase in tax revenue generated to the city, provides a 4.64 estimated levy rate, which is a drop of .33 mils from the current levy rate. I want to clarify for those watching, again, what it means to talk about a 3% property tax increase. Most people think that means that they will pay 3% higher than what they paid last year. What a homeowner pays depends on not only what the city asks for in tax dollars, but also the increase to their property's values over the previous year. This slide shows a $300 house with $100,000 homeowner's exemption. With the current levy rate, they would pay $994 to the city. If the increase really was a 3% increase, that would mean they would pay $1,023. But the reality is, is that if the valuation of their home does not increase, they would actually be paying $66 less in 2020, even if the city asked for a 3% increase to the dollar amount that the city receives in tax revenue. I have several scenarios of what the tax bill would look like for an average house valued at $300,000. They are all included in the packet, and I'm always available to answer any questions on any of them, but for the sake of time, I'm just going to show you the summary of all those different scenarios. This summary shows the increase or decrease the owner of a $300,000 home would pay per month in property taxes under different valuation increases and/or including a 3% increase in the city's tax budget. I also wanted to point out how the levy rate affects the dollars that the city can generate from new growth. The drop in the levy rate from fiscal year 1718 to 1819 caused a decrease in what the new growth would generate in the amount of $43,000. Even if the city takes the 3% increase, the levy will likely drop due to the increased valuation of the city. With the estimates we're, with the estimates we are using, if the city's new growth for 2020-21 was the same as the new growth in 2019-20, the new growth would generate $13,000 less due to the drop in the levy rate. Lastly, this budget includes expenses in the general fund that will be paid for from parking fund revenues. The general fund revenues include a transfer from the parking fund for $210,000, and the Parks Capital Improvement Fund includes a transfer from the parking fund for $190,000. This slide shows the details of the needed equipment and upgrades that the park department will be using these added funds for. These addition, additions include one full-time maintenance worker position, equipment, fire mitigation on Tubbs Hill, and some miscellaneous designs and improvements.
I thought we didn't use the parking fund for people.
The, well, it's a transfer from the parking fund, which we'd have never had any stipulations on that. Now, Parks Capital Improvement Fund is not used for people.
Okay, so that's the one.
This transfer is into the general fund.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Questions for Vani? Again, tonight is, we're just setting the high watermark, and maybe Vani just briefly explain the high watermark and why we do it now, and just so everyone understands that.
The high watermark is set so that we can continue looking at the budget until the public hearing in September. This is the highest this budget will be allowed to go. What you decide tonight, it cannot go any higher, but it can still go lower from this resolution.
Okay.
And then, in September, we will approve the ordinance for the final budget.
Kiki?
So to be clear, between now and then, we have an opportunity to shift things within the budget. We just can't go over what's outlined here as far as the 3% and the totals.
Correct, yes. And we'll be available for any questions or comments or ideas that come forward.
Any, any question? Ron?
Uh, Vani, maybe Bill can answer this. Persson Field, where's money for persons? Or is there?
We haven't budgeted for this, this fiscal, but it's still on our long-range plan. The last time we've done any work out there was a couple of years ago. We were looking at the restroom facility, and we've talked about those before. Those are very expensive. It'd be about $350,000, maybe a little more because we would have to do an ADA access. So that's something we'll budget for in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If no other questions, we'd be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of 19027, setting preliminary budget for fiscal year 2019-20, and scheduling a public hearing for September 3, 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second. Through the discussion, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, I vote against this out of, just because I don't like increasing taxes. But I will be voting for this this year to show my support for including the police cars and radios in the budget. So I will be voting yes.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please. Renata?
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. So I am gonna take a little break, but you guys can't, and I will turn this over to councilman President McEvers to handle that, and then I'll be back.
All right, Mayor. So this is a request for reconsideration of decision regarding SP 1-19. Mike Gridley, give us your story.
Good evening. This is a request filed by Terry Godbout for a reconsideration of the council's decision on June 4, 2019. On that date, council affirmed the, the approval or decision by the Planning Commission for a special use permit, SP 1-19. The project involves property that the mayor has some ownership in, and so that's why he is excusing, recusing himself from participating in this. He would have a conflict of interest. Counsel, excuse me, council denied the appeal. As you recall, you were here. This is a request to reconsider that decision. We've reviewed it. There's been no new evidence presented. A written request stated that they want a request, or want a reconsideration based on the same facts and law that they presented to you on June 4, 2019. Legally, we see no new evidence, no new legal argument that would justify having a reconsideration. And so our recommendation would be that the request for reconsideration of your decision be denied.
Questions? Mr. Gookin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gridley, Mr. Godbout sent an email to us, and one of his issues that he raised was that there's another person who's submitted a reconsideration, Mr. Douglas, and that apparently that is moving forward. Can you explain what the difference between that moving forward and this not is?
Well, I think he misstated that the Douglas matter is moving forward. It is true that they did send us a letter, seven-page letter via his attorney, pointing out complaints that they had, issues of fact and law they raised concerning the hearing where the Douglas matter, Douglas appeal was denied. That's one big distinction. But it has not been brought forward as this one has been. It has, no date has been set. It has, no date has been set for council to consider, do you want to reconsider that decision? But substantively, it's different in my mind and legally, I think. The request for reconsideration submitted by Mr. Godbout basically says, "For the same reasons that we gave you on June 4, you should reconsider your decision." And you can do that if you want to. You can say, "Yeah, let's, let's set a hearing." In contrast, what we've received from Mr. Douglas and frankly are still evaluating are, is a, is a seven-page letter enumerating their complaints or their issues with the way the hearing was conducted, with some of the matters that were done in the actual hearing. So does that make sense?
Yeah, and then that, that would come to us just like this had come to us. And then we decide whether we want to hear it again and that's, that's the process. So it's, it's basically, it's, it's not as far along as this was.
Right.
Okay. So we're not being unfair to anyone. We're giving everyone the fair shake.
No, I don't think you would characterize it as being unfair. I think certainly if, if new evidence would have been presented in there written. And just to step back, the reconsideration process, I think, is put into state statute to allow folks, to allow a council or a planning commission to have an opportunity after making a decision to go, "Oh, wait a minute. Maybe we did something wrong. Wait a minute. Maybe during that hearing, we did something wrong or did something inaccurate." But none of the evidence or the, none of the facts or law presented in their written request for reconsideration, Mr. Godbout adds anything new to the process. And so that's, that's different than the issues raised by Mr. Douglas in his request that we're still, like I said, we're still evaluating those, the merit of those, those points.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mike, um, I feel like I've been here a long time and I don't ever, ever remember this word reconsideration. Is this something new? Is it?
It is a relatively new, I think it was added by the legislature in 2016.
Oh, really?
And it's just a, again, I think it, it makes some sense that if there, if the, the decision-making board makes some mistake, other than, "We didn't like the project when we came to you the first time. We don't like it any better now." I mean, that's not really a mistake. But if there's something procedurally, let's say you let somebody testify who had a conflict of interest or you did something that was legally wrong, your lawyer let you do it. And then we go, "Oh, that was a mistake. We should reconsider, you should have the opportunity to reconsider that." If you want to, you can. If you don't, then you say, "No, well, we feel good about it." They'd still have an opportunity, an aggrieved party like Mr. Godbout could go to court and file a complaint challenging our decisions.
Okay.
But it is a relatively new process and I think probably well-intentioned, but doesn't fit in this instance, in my opinion.
Okay. Does the, does the statute state that in the reconsideration, the purpose for the request of the reconsideration has to be included in the request?
Yes, it has to be written, specific deficiencies, I think is the language in the written request.
And there were no deficiencies presented?
Well, they said, "The specific deficiencies are the same ones we presented to you at the hearing that night."
I see.
There's no difference, so...
Gotcha.
So is reconsideration a one-shot deal? If he realizes that he didn't fulfill this obligation as we, as you're saying it needs to be, are we slamming the door that he hasn't got new evidence or is it just this process timing right now?
Right, well, the statute, so yeah, this would be your decision whether you want to reconsider your decision or not. And just as a side, you know, they've had, Mr. Godbout's had, amounted several weeks since June 4 to come up with if there's new, anything new that could have been submitted to us in writing. They sent a letter June 18, basically saying, "We reiterate the same complaints we raised with you June 4." And that's, that's it. If they had said, "We have this, we say the same things and we've discovered this," or, "And the law," there's a different law that should be, have been applied here. That's a different deal.
Well, I think we are following what we're obligated to do and we affirmed the planning committee's findings on June 4 and there's been nothing new presented that would cause us to go through the process again to reaffirm what we reaffirmed. So I would make a motion that we deny the request for reconsideration.
Second.
Decision recording, SP 111, no new evidence was presented.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Dan?
Question. You mentioned that the, you know, if some, if we thought we made an error in the process, it's a chance for kind of a do-over of that and I get that. But does it allow that, let's just say in the last five weeks, for some reason, enough of the council just plain changed their mind and said, "You know, I've been thinking about that and gonna go a different direction." Or, or is it just because there, something was done wrong?
My understanding is we'd still have, I didn't mean to do that, but just to answer both questions, is that we would still have to be definitive in what findings the planning commission determined that we find incorrect. We couldn't just change our mind. We'd have to say, "This is the finding that we disagree with." And, and we, there hasn't been anything presented that would change the evidence presented the first time that would cause us to disagree with. I, I, I understand it that way.
So, I think in your, your question, you could say, okay, let's, so let's say you've had, you've changed your mind. You could say, "Well, I would vote to hear the reconsideration." And at that point, you could hear the, the same evidence, basically. And then you would...
And then you'd make finding.
You would have to make findings different from what the planning commission approved and what you approved on June 4.
Well, I had the question, but no, I have not changed my mind in five weeks.
And I just want to make sure we're following that, that, what the letter of the law says we have to do and that we have to, you know, if we haven't, if there's been nothing new that would say, "Here's your reason why you should disagree with that finding that the planning commission found," then, then that's where I would, would struggle with wanting to hear the same information again.
And just to repeat, the difference between this and the Lance Douglas thing is that in his response to you, he's cited specific items that he has an issue with that he believes we should consider for our reconsideration.
Specific items regarding the process of the hearing where the decision was made. It's not specific items about evidence, the same evidence that was presented at the hearing where you made your decision. And that, that's the distinction.
Call for the question.
Yeah, so we have a motion, we have a second, right? So we're moving forward. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thanks, Michael.
You're welcome.
Oh, might as well hang out, bring the mayor back, give him his job back. This is just too stressful. I'm sorry.
Better hide it.
I may or may not have been eating a cookie back there.
Mr. Mayor, I'm...
There's cookies?
Cookies?
Mr. Mayor, I move for, uh, Resolution 19-028, establishing no parking in front of yard gates on the south side of East Lakeshore Drive between 11th Street and 15th Street.
So we have a motion. Mike, would you like to give your presentation now?
Let me, let me just give you a couple of pictures. A lot of trouble, or Juanito went to a lot of trouble to come up with this. So we all know East Lakeshore, Sanders Beach area. And the problem is that on the south side, people, there's parking allowed on the south side, the side next to the properties owned by the people on the north side. And so very few of us have streets that go through the middle of our properties. And as a result, when they try and access their properties, and these are, these were painted by the city a couple of years ago in an attempt to create access. But you get situations like this where if they want to bring a lawnmower, a lawn chair, wheelbarrow, anything, and there is a car, there's no sidewalk on that south side. And so they have no way to access it. And so what we're proposing is that we would paint no parking here along these boxes for one access for each resident to get to their property. And then it would be like a parking violation if somebody does park on top of this. And I think it's analogous to, we already have a law on the books that prevents any of us from parking in front of someone's driveway. Why do we have that? Because then you can't get in and out of your property. There's no way to get into your garage. And the same thing here. Their only way to get in would be to come in by boat with their lawnmower and put it up where the seat, or... So it, it's just a, gives them access to their property. Sorry, Ron.
Second. And if we don't have it yet, I will second Ron's motion.
So what do you, what do you got there?
Okay.
So any questions, Mike?
Uh, I, I, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you can answer this. The enforcement would be by the police, but also can our cops guys write parking tickets for this?
Our citizens on...
He's not here.
Yeah. Code enforcement can.
Code enforcement could, okay.
I'm not sure about our citizens on patrol. And it, you know, it's could be low priority, but I think it's worked with the no parking painted on there. But it, it really didn't have the force of law. So this came up, someone got a ticket, they said, "Hey, where does it say in your code that this isn't allowed?" And we said, "Oh, well, it doesn't." And so this makes it legally enforceable and I think it solves some problems and makes it clear for people parking what they can and can't do.
Well, I, I hope it's enforced. I hope they, they get calls. I mean, they, they get response from that because that's what's important. You're right, the first ticket, everyone finds out. Why is this a resolution and not an ordinance?
Because in an ordinance, then you have to codify it and put it in the code and it adds expense to it. The, the parking ordinance allows you to designate places by resolution.
Okay.
And so it has the force, but you don't have to go to the expense of modifying the code and codifying it.
Clever, thank you.
So we had a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? Roll call, please. Renata?
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Now we will have the public hearing. This is a legislative hearing, A-3-19. Proposed 6.125 acre annexation from county rural industrial to R1 zoning. The location is 4176 East Potlatch Hill Road. Applicant is Virginia Tate. Sean?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Give a moment to get this fired up. Okay, as mentioned, I want to turn that down a bit. I have a little bit of a loud voice. Thank you. All right, so as mentioned, there is a request tonight for an annexation, A319. It's zoning in conjunction with annexation of 6.156 acres from county ag suburban to city R1 zoning district. So that is the decision point. Wow, I'm going all over the place here. All right, so this is the map of the annexation request. This is Potlatch Hill Road as it heads up here. There is a little bit of a switch here because Potlatch Hill takes a hard right and goes up to Virginia Tate's property now and this is where Sky Harbor begins as it goes up towards the neighborhood Armstrong Park. Here is a map for context. The white dashed boundary is the subject property right here. This has been filed in conjunction with a short plot to further subdivide this property into four pieces at some point in the near future. Fernand Lake to the north, city limits shown in red, Armstrong Park PUD, which is the access through the subject property, Coeur d'Alene Golf, Golf Course and Coeur d'Alene Lake down here to the south. In your, in your staff report, there is a statement that was provided by the legal department of why this request is coming forward with an annexation agreement as well as a settlement agreement. It is important, a little housekeeping note I want to point out is at the end of my staff report, and it's, it is planning's fault, there was included one, there's two copies. One from planning commission packet which is incomplete showing the settlement and annexation agreements. And then legal added the complete signed versions later after that. So the second one in your packet is the actual annexation agreement and settlement agreement. So this is the Kootenay County land use map and, and their zoning map and what it is currently zoned in the county. It is ag suburban right now. The portions of the map that are, are not colored are currently in city limits or associated with Fernand Village. In your packet as well, there is the R1 residential zoning district information that provides setbacks, height, et cetera. Also, the property does, or would be annexed in under the hillside ordinance. So that would govern the amount of disturbable area, the color of the homes, et cetera. There is an exemption for that if the property is less than 15% slope. We've taken a look at that. There's actually the applicant's engineer and the four lots that are proposed would be all above that 15%, so the hillside would apply. So there are some required findings with annexation and I'll go through that portion right now. The first one is, is that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. The subject property is adjacent to city limits. It does fall within the southeast hillside portion of the comprehensive plan. Here is the map showing the area and what the description of transition is, which is the green color below. There's the southeast hillside today. That was, you have to put yourself back in 2006 when this was written. So things have certainly changed and then also what the southeast hillside tomorrow is and the description of that. Suffice it to say that it would be lower in density and that there is, is hillsides in, in the area. Does fall in, within the special areas portion of the comprehensive plan describing what hillside landmarks are. And I have underlined here specifically that the slopes above Fernand Lake within the planning area also contribute to the setting and help define our physical image. What the policy as well as the methods are for improvements and ECI. Listed in your staff report, these are verbatim from the plan. Rather than have 15 slides here, I, I just put what the, the categories are for the objectives in the comp plan. Finding B9 is that the public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. Chris Bosley from Stormwater said that that would be addressed at the time of permit and that all the stormwater must remain on site. Streets, there is an existing street right now and it would service the, the property without problem. Water Department, they referred to the settlement and annexation agreements for how water would be supplied to the subject property. And wastewater, there is an existing eight-inch line and that will serve the property. Fire Department gave us their, their boilerplate language regarding access to the property and that will be reviewed at the time of permit. So finding B10 is that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for a request at the ti, at this time. There is a pretty aggressive slope. Like I said, it would fall under hillside. Our current hillside code does deal with how to develop in, in a sloped property. You can see here, these are the contours out there. You can see there are some fairly aggressive slopes, particularly in this area and off the site down to Fernand. Here are some photographs of the property from Sky Harbor Drive. This is directly looking perpendicular to the street. And then parallel with the street, you can see that, that it does drop... does drop off fairly quickly. Now this is above, taking a look down into the subject property from Potlatch Hill Road where it turns into, to gravel. And then looking the other way as well. So finding B11 is that the proposal would or would not adversely affect surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. Traffic, which was provided by Chris Bosley, said that the streets would accommodate any, any traffic that are associated with the four lots that are coming. Neighborhood character and existing land uses, it's associated with access to Armstrong Park, and hillside would be triggered for any construction on the site. Here's generalized land uses, lots of this is civic use, and neighborhood, and some vacant areas as, as well. Zoning of the area, Armstrong Park is zoned R3 PUD, the property that the city owns that has some trails on it is zoned R3, as per the request, this property would be zoned R1 if approved, and then Hagadon's property associated with the golf course as well as the condos, down here is zone C17PUD. So with that, that concludes my staff report, your finding worksheets are attached, and you were asked to consider approval of this request. The applicant is here, and we have also provided proper legal notice for this hearing. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Sean?
The applicant's representative is here.
All right, thank you, Sean, appreciate that. And so we will invite the applicant up for his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council folks, my name is Peter Smith. My address in Coeur d'Alene, 601 East Front Avenue, Suite 304, Coeur d'Alene.
And Renata will swear you in.
Peter. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Virginia Tate couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to come and answer any questions you have. Before I get to the questions, I just wanted to outline some of the aspects regarding this annexation request. I went through the staff report and the relative ordinances, and I don't see any reason under the law to deny this request. As staff pointed out, this is a very low-impact annexation, four lots on the hillside, and in fact, it'll probably add some fire protection to the Armstrong Park neighborhood. It is related to a settlement agreement, which is in your packet, which you may have questions about, which I'd be happy to answer. There's an annexation agreement as well that's been worked through with the city staff and legal regarding this annexation, so on behalf of the applicant, I would ask that this annexation be approved. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Peter? Does not look like it, so thank you, appreciate that. So I will open the public testimony portion of this, I don't have any names on the, on the list besides the applicant. Is there anyone in the audience that would be wished to add to this list for a public comment on that? Not seeing any, I will then close the public comment portion of that, and look for council action, if there's no other questions.
So Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve A319, as, A319A, as proposed, 6.125 acre annexation from County Rural Industrial to R1 zoning district, location would be 4176 East Potlatch Hill Road, applicant Virginia Tate, to direct staff to negotiate an annexation agreement and to develop the necessary findings in order.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the annexation agreement, which you guys negotiated really fast, with Virginia Tate for the annexation of 6.125 acres at 4176 East Potlatch Hill Road, to be zoned from County Rural Industrial to R1 Zoning District.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah. And then I would like to move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill Number 191007, once by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill Number 19-1007, an ordinance annexing to and declaring to be a part of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, specifically described portions of Section 19, Township 50 North, Range 3 West, Boise Meridian. Zoning such specifically described property hereby annexed, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt Council Bill 191007.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call one final time.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Would you second that? Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you everyone for their work tonight. These are the water guys.